Okay, here we go. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 6, 2013 meeting of the City Council, which is now called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card, which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see our city clerk staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Ian Ridell, Associate Minister of the Humanist, Minister Unitarian, Universalistic Congregation of Las Vegas, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm honored to be here today. You have come to this place by many different paths and from many different lives. You're gathered here to do the work of building a community of trust and justice and hope. May you step into the task ahead with open hearts and open ears, knowing that the gratitude and aspirations of those you represent enter this chamber with you today. May the words that you speak here be as kind as they are passionate, always steadfastly faithful to the purpose of representing all the people of our city. May our actions be grounded in the common purpose of creating a fair, just, and equitable path for this community we share. Please join me now in a moment of silence, humble in the presence of the work before you and the beckoning spirit within. May you be reminded always by that deep love which calls your heart and spirit that we are inextricably tied each to each into a broad and rich community, and that each word spoken or action taken in this chamber be in service to the health and thriving of that community. In gratitude for your service, I say, may it always be so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a nation of the bottom, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend, and now we will continue on with our ceremonial portion of the agenda. All right, again, good morning, everyone. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for our first item, Councilman Coffin is going to recognize the Citizen of the Month. Are you a lucky man?
I'm not the only lucky person here today, Your Honor. We're all very lucky, and the citizens of Las Vegas are very lucky to have people that we honor, and today a very special kind of presentation because we have the pleasure of introducing to the city a good man who delivered a little baby for all of us. So one of our newest citizens of Las Vegas is also here. You know, it was a nice morning. I guess, well, what time of the day was that? Sometime in the day, on the 14th of October. It happened the next day I read about it. A young Metro officer had been called to assist in a lady in distress who was delivering a baby suddenly, rather quickly. I think there had been a little hiccup in the communication system, and literally Officer Jesus Jimenez was the closest person, the person able to respond first before medical and to a distress call from a family who was going to have, and from a little baby brother, too, who was going to be having a sibling introduced to the world. And by golly, we have with us today Officer Jesus Jimenez, who we are going to honor as our November 2013 Citizen of the Month. Jesus, would you please come up here with me at the podium? And... (applause) Today, joining Jesus is his lovely wife, Aranza, wave, Aranza, and of course, get everybody, and Jessica and Lisa. Wave your hands, kids. You're on camera. And Mom, Mrs. Jimenez, welcome. That's the grandma. I want to say that Jesus has been a police officer for six years, and he's been assigned to the Northeast Area Command for the past two years, under the command of Captain Fletcher, who I think is in the audience today. On October 14th, our dispatch, our Metro dispatch, received that call that a woman needed medical assistance, and quick, and she was in labor, and they didn't realize, I think, how quickly that labor was moving. And Officer Jimenez was dispatched, as he was the closest. He proceeded to an apartment complex on East Charleston Boulevard, and upon arrival, approached a vehicle where young Biani Villasenor was inside of the car giving birth to a child. We're going to meet her, too, today. Officer Jimenez assisted in delivering the newborn girl, Melanie, and during the delivery, Officer Jimenez noticed that the umbilical cord was wrapped tightly around the baby's neck and that she was having a hard time breathing. And he relied upon his experience, not only at Metro but in the Army, his training, and he helped by unwrapping that cord around the baby's neck and clearing the airway, the basic rules we should all know when someone is having trouble. A short time later, Biani and Melanie were transported to the hospital by Medical Services. In the audience today is Biani Villasenor and her newborn Melanie, plus her child, Antonio, who I think Antonio is about three years old. And while we have you here, I don't know whether others can see the baby, but Melanie and Mom, we wish you so many blessings for this holiday season. Truly, we're lucky to have you here. And today, Officer Jimenez is recognized for the entire month of November, not just today, for his life-saving actions, his commitment to excellence, and for his service to this community. Under Sheriff Dixon, you're here, aren't you? Come on down, Jim. Say a couple of words. And Captain Fletcher, are you still here? Would you like to come down? You could come down, and I know the patrol chief, Tom Roberts, is in the audience, and I don't know if Tom would like to come down. We're old friends, because Tom used to represent Metro at the Nevada Legislature, and that's where he basically, he saved his life by retiring from that. Good to see you, Jim.
See you, sir.
I think that I'd like to ask you, Under Sheriff, if you'd like to say a few words on his behalf.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I've been on the department a couple months short of 30 years now, and we always know in the back of our minds that there's a possibility that we may have to do what Jesus did, but doesn't happen on a regular basis. Probably out of my career, I can think of maybe just a small handful of people that have had to deliver a baby. And this department, when it does happen, we're shocked that it happened, and we're pleased that a new child has come into the world, but we're also thankful that we have people like this officer who steps up to the plate and does what he has to do under very difficult circumstances. Most people never experienced that. If you think about it, when your children were born, you may have stood there, but you did nothing. He did something. He took charge, and we're very proud of him at the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. So thank you, and we will recognize Officer Jimenez in our normal procedures that we do at Metro. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Jesus, say a couple of words. I know you're not prepared to talk, and you're a man of few words, but you don't have to stop at a few. If you have a few prepared, that's okay, too.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, Mayor Goodman and City Council. First, I would like to thank Councilman Bob Coffin for selecting me as the Citizen of the Month for the city of Las Vegas. I also want to thank Under Sheriff Jim Dixon for being present, and Marco Alvarado, President of the National Latino Peace Officers Association, Las Vegas Chapter, for being here today. I am very proud to be a Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Officer, and I am humbled by the opportunity to assist the birth of Melanie. Having never met the mother, Biani, I was not sure what I would encounter. However, my training kicked in, and Biani was able to give birth and see her child, Melanie. Thank you, Councilman Coffin, for this recognition, and I will continue to proudly serve the Las Vegas community.
Jesus, I'd like to present you with this plaque for you to hang on the wall at home or in the office. Your office would be your car. I don't think you want to put it in there, and so I think the family would be proud to have you there as a Citizen of the Month. Congratulations to you. Now then, as a typical man, he's a man, right? We always take credit for whatever happens. We don't suffer the pain and agony of childbirth, do we? But there's several ladies on this council that would like to very much make sure that we don't neglect the mom. Can you come on up and visit with us? Biani, can you and Melanie come to the podium? Please show Melanie to the world. She's now on television for the very first time. We're all very proud of her. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you for coming today. I don't know if you're prepared to say anything or no, if you'd like to just invent something. Please do.
Well, I want to say thanks to Officer Jimenez, because he helped me have my baby, and if it wasn't for him, she wouldn't be here, I guess. And thank you.
Jesus, that's the wonderful, wonderful thing. Thank you so much for those words. Stay with us for a minute here. Anthony, are you okay? He's kind of shy. We're going to go over to the something, the sign over here, and take a picture. That sign's going to hang out in front of City Hall for a month. On Main Street, you're going to be recognized, so bring sure the family goes out. I think we'll have it up soon, so before you leave the City Hall, I believe, we can get you outside to take a picture by where it's hanging. Thank you very much for being here. Let's all go, and the council can take a picture with you. And you, too, Mom. Okay?
Great, thank you. Is her middle name Jesus? Okay, off we go over there. That's wonderful. You may not have that baby. You're too old. Okay, for our next item, I have the pleasure of presenting an award to an outstanding group of city employees. The Action Team Award recognizes a team of employees who strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. To help me present this recognition, I'd like to invite our Director of Operations and Maintenance, Larry Hogness, and Construction Management Supervisor, Michael Mann, to join us at the podium. Great guys. This last summer, the city suffered through some incredible rainfall events, as you all remember, that took an especially heavy toll on Ward 6 Residence and Area in the Northwest. We had multiple storms that dumped inches and inches of rain in very short periods of time, causing flash flooding and damaging street and property. The worst of the storms parked over the burnt area on Mount Charleston caused by the Carpenter One fire. With no vegetation to slow the rain, we soon had water pouring off the mountains running toward homes in Centennial Hills with huge force. This left an enormous mess behind, but thanks to our city crews, who really responded quickly and in full-out effort, we were able to mitigate the issues our homeowners faced and got things cleaned up quite quickly, so that the storms had the smallest possible impact on the quality of life in our Northwest. Recalling how immediately our Councilman Steve Ross was out there assessing damage and trying to make a plan with our city response team, he's sorry he couldn't be here today, but on his behalf, I want you all to know that he just is so very grateful. So today, we want to honor the street crews who are out there putting in the work, clearing the mud, placing the barriers, and responding to the citizens in need. I see so many of those crew members here today. I'd like them all to stand so we can give them a huge thank you and round of applause. Would you please stand? And because we show this again and again and again, would you all turn around face the back, so you can see your faces? The film, filming. We so appreciate you. You're the very best. It's possible there may be filming going from this side, but nobody ever told me, and I hate, you may not get a second chance, so there you are. We can't tell you how grateful. You can go three times, right? But we thank you, because we know the entire area would not have been helped without your immediate and full-out support. So let me see. I don't think people realize that just one of the storms that passed through, and I told this to my husband last night, I couldn't believe it, there was enough water to fill a football field as tall as the stratosphere. Enough to fill a football field the size of the stratosphere. It's an amazing amount of water, and despite all that was lost, there were no lives lost, which is incredible, no homes lost, and no businesses. So we have certificates for each team member that we will give to Larry to hand out, and Larry, we'd love to have you say a few words, and then also, Michael, if you would. I know you're so proud.
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you very much. I want to first thank the mayor and the council and the city management team for providing this opportunity to recognize some of our great employees, because we truly have a lot of great employees. This was a really unusual event. This was just a small number of the people that were involved, and there are probably over 80 people involved, and about 70% of our resources were dedicated to doing that. And the amazing thing is the rest of the city kept on living, and they've really done a fantastic job of making everything work, so they've done a great job. And I want to thank Councilman Ross. He actually nominated the team, and he kind of said it best when he told Jerry Walker that his team really rocks, so we really thank him for that. Mike, I'll let you say a few words.
Yeah, on behalf of the team, I just want to say thank you, Streets East, Streets West, Rapid Response, the sweepers, sanitation. Unfortunately, it takes extraordinary circumstances for extraordinary people to be recognized. Thanks.
Beautifully said. We are so proud, and thank you very much. And at the end of our meeting today, when we have councilpersons and mayor's comments and recognitions, we have something for Councilman Ross, because again, he just really is so sorry he couldn't be here and wants to thank each one of you for your total efforts, and for those who are part of the team that couldn't be here today. You can see the large number of certificates we have, one for each, and if we missed anybody, please, of course, let us know. We're so grateful for what you do in leadership, too. Thank you both. Thank you. And for our next item, I have the pleasure of asking Peter Anthony to join us at the podium. Where are you, Peter? There you are. And coming with Peter is our wonderful lead counsel, Brad Jerbik. Peter is the owner of the local salon, Let's Talk About Hair. Could you tell? Your hair. Okay. Excuse me. Peter is, oh, see, I have an error here. Peter is the owner of the local salon, Let's Talk About Your Hair, and he's done some extraordinary work in the community. Our city attorney, Brad Jerbik, brought Peter to my attention, and we're happy to have both of them joining us today. Recently, this is an incredible offer and acceptance that took place. Recently, Peter provided free grooming and haircuts for dozens of homeless individuals at the Shade Tree Shelter. This may not seem like a lot, but it went a long way to building self-esteem for some of our citizens who found themselves living on this street and extremely challenged in the adversities they're facing. In addition to his work, he helped in the process of getting these individuals looking their best, so they could go out looking for professional job interviews. We often talk about going the extra mile to help others, but Peter actually took it upon himself to do it and to do something to contribute to the life of the city of Las Vegas, and that's a great, great effort, and the city council really appreciate what you've done. I know dozens and dozens of people you've helped also appreciate what you've done, because you've left your mark in their hair. To thank you, Peter, I'd like to present you with the proclamation making November 6, 2013, Peter Anthony Day, here in the city of Las Vegas, and we'd love to hear from you and talk about what it was like providing service to so many in our community who are in need. But before that, I want to ask council, our legal advisor, Attorney Brad Jerbik, to make a comment first, because it was through you that we learned of this fabulous effort.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As many of you know, we've had a domestic violence program in our office for a long time. I'd like to invite Suzette Landham to come on up. She is one of our top domestic violence advocates. This is one of those causes that really doesn't draw a lot of attention. Every year in October, it's Domestic Violence Month, and every year, we have some ceremonies and things like that, but very rarely do you ever meet somebody that steps up and does something that Peter didn't. So when I met Peter in September, and I found out that he was going to Shade Tree on September 21st to the 24th, making sure everybody had transportation to his salon, making sure that they got any services they wanted at the salon, and I'm going to have him tell you the numbers, and then he gave them $18,000 worth of comeback treatments, so it wasn't just a one-time thing. So he wants to make a permanent difference in their lives. I thought that needed to be recognized. I wanted to say, Peter, I'm honored to meet you, to be your friend, and congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you.
This is the proclamation. We're so proud of you.
That's awesome. I really need to make sure that I recognize this, not on my behalf, because I actually orchestrated it with my team, but it was my team who did it. You know, we took care of 260 ladies over three days, 640 services. I believe it was the largest beauty event of its kind ever. And we came to Las Vegas six months ago, and we opened two businesses, Let's Talk About Your Hair in Summerlin on West Charleston and Lake Mead Boulevard. And one of the things that was important to us is, when you show up to a community, it's important to, everybody's asking something from the community, but what we wanted to do is make sure that the community understands we're here to give to the community before we're asking to take from it. So my team was awesome, but I'm completely inspired by my wife and children, so.
Beautiful. Are any members of your team here?
I had no idea this was going to happen, or I would have had them all here, but they're always here. I think they're watching, so to my team members, thank you so much. Next year, we're looking to do 1,000 people from the community. So, you know, every September, every September, and we're looking closely, very excited to work with your department, to really isolate the people whose lives can be changed through just the effort of giving something. We had so many great stories, women crying, they'd never been in a salon, or they hadn't been in a salon so long and gotten their hair done, and now, as they're filtering back for the second and third services, it was awesome. Big undertaking.
I bet.
Big undertaking, but thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, actually. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, when you start working with the gentlemen, we have three that I seek at UJ's Services. Love you guys, though. Congratulations. We're so proud. Yes, please.
I also wanted to just take this opportunity to let people know, if you are watching, if you are a victim of domestic violence, please call our office. It's 229-2525. Suzette, who disappeared for a moment? Let me just let Suzette just say just a couple of words, because if you, again, if you are a victim, it's not going to stop. It's not going to stop until you report it. It's not going to stop until you get some assistance and get out of it. You've heard about Shade Tree, which is a wonderful shelter if you need to get out of the house. There are wonderful people like Peter in the community that are willing to step up and help. Let me introduce you to Suzette for one moment, and she's going to talk a little bit about what we do in the office.
In the Victim Witness Unit in the Criminal Division of the City Attorney's Office, we, as victim advocates, work with victims of domestic violence on a daily basis. We assist them through the court process when the perpetrator has been arrested or there's been a criminal offense that's been reported. But what most individuals don't understand is domestic violence is so incredibly terrifying on its own. It's hurtful, it's painful, and then you get catapulted into a system that you're clearly clueless about. So to add to your daily fear, now you're adding to this criminal justice system that's going to come in and intervene in your life, and it may affect in what you think is going to make things worse, may make it better, but as victim advocates, what we're here is to assist them through the court process. But mostly and foremost, we work with them on crisis intervention, safety planning, understand what domestic violence is about, because even though you're living it, you don't necessarily totally comprehend it, and you think it's going to change, you think it's going to get better, and typically, it doesn't without intervention on your part and taking responsibility for what you can do to make your life better and safer. So we're available not only to the victims who have been affected and they have a case in this system, but you're always welcome to call if we can assist or provide assistance to any agencies that can assist you, because there's a big, big picture other than just the court system that's taking place. And on behalf of the City Attorney's Office, I'd really love to thank Peter. This is an awesome, awesome thing that he's done for the community, because again, some people have never experienced anything positive in their lives, and it's a cycle that perpetuates through generations, and so to have somebody step up and say, you're awesome and you deserve this for free, and we're doing it because we care and that we want to make a difference in your life, is completely commendable, and I appreciate it from the City Attorney's Office, all of us, and for advocates that are down there working with victims. It's an awesome thing that you've done, and thank you very much.
Suzette, could you please advise anyone that's hearing this, that is in that very terrible compromising situation? How do they reach out? How can they do it quickly? And what would be the likelihood of their getting immediate help? How do they reach out for help?
The most important thing is if there is violence that's currently taking place in the home, the most important thing is to report it. I understand that that makes individuals feel incredibly vulnerable and make them feel that the situation is going to get worse, but when agencies are involved, then intervention can happen. Not only do you have advocates in every agency, not just the City Attorney's Office, you have advocates in Metro, you have advocates in every shelter here locally. In addition to that, all of us as advocates work closely together, so there is safety planning, there is shelter, there are agencies that do provide assistance in relocating, there are agencies that provide assistance in medical treatment if there's been medical injuries that have occurred. So the most important thing that I can say is to reach out.
How? Immediately. Immediately, how?
Well, immediately, obviously, is to call 911. If it's a non-emergency situation, there is a hotline number with Safe Nest. In addition to that, if it's a non-emergency, you can still call the 311 number for Metro, say there's not a physical incident that's taking place at that moment, and ask to speak with a victim advocate. A victim advocate through Metro can start that ball rolling and start that assistance, even though maybe you haven't reported an immediate crime.
Again, congratulations. Thank you for helping, for being so responsive to our community, so quickly, having just moved here six months ago. And Brad, I'm so glad you got to know him. We're so grateful to you. And for those who are listening, remember, seek help, don't waste time. Don't waste time. Thank you. Thank you, Suzette, too. Congratulations. And for our next item, Councilwoman Tarkanian is going to recognize a group of students who are really doing a great job at Chargerville, Clark High School.
Got to say, great Chargerville, yes. We are here today to honor some students who have achieved outstanding academic placement. And I'd like to ask the principal of Clark High School, Jill Pendleton, to come up here. And also Joseph Winfield, if you could come up, Joseph. And also Shirley McLeese. Many times, I've stated here that Clark High School is the best-kept secret in Las Vegas. I don't know if it's a secret anymore. They have been doing so many outstanding things that they're recognized many, many places. And today, we're going to recognize 14 individuals that have achieved the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test on the semifinalist level. And I'd like to call their names and have them come up. And you know why? So everybody can see them and know how outstanding they are. And to understand that Clark is a unique type of magnet school, it has three separate magnets, it also has regular students, and they're intermingled in different ways so that we have, I think, a realistic view of what the world is like. So let me see if I can ask them up, and if I mispronounce a name, Jill, you help me, okay? Spencer Berger, could you come up, please? Stephanie Chang? Craig Grant? Theodore Kern? Seal Yang? Is that correct? Steven. Oh, my, okay. Ji Wu Kern? Michael Kwak? Evan Merrill? Michael Mooney? Joshua Pelegi? Zachary Shattler, who is the son of one of our city's marshals, Tim Shattler, his son is here. Also, Griffin Taber, who's the son of Amy and our other little Mr. Taber there, who does an outstanding job with our mayor's tournament. Frank Wan and Kevin Tsang. Have I got everybody? Did I miss somebody? Okay. Now, we have...come over here, please. Yeah. And then, could I ask, I know some of them are standing already to take pictures, but could all the parents of these youngsters, please, stand? Let us know because it's the parents behind the children that make the difference. Thank you. Last month, officials of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation announced the names of approximately 16,000 semifinalists throughout the country in the 59th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some 8,000 National Merit Scholarships worth about $35 million that will be offered next spring. And because Clark High School has the reputation and has set the precedence that their semifinalists go on, every one of them, to be selected a finalist, I think we can figure they're going to do it again this year. About 1.5 million juniors in more than 22,000 high schools entered this 2014 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2012 Preliminary National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. And the national pool of semifinalists, of which these 14 are part, represents less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors. So right here today, less than 1% on the semifinalist level. Our Clark High School is noted for its academic achievement. I also might say that the 14 is the highest number in the state. I know that you're tied with another school, but that's a private school that only accepts gifted, so it doesn't quite fit in the same range as accepting all students. And so we're very proud of that. But I'm also proud of other things Clark does. Just this Saturday, their Navy ROTC met with us and cleaned out parks for us and are adopting a park, and you should see how good they are. Very uniformed, very much in sync with each other, did a magnificent job. They have a Clark cupboard where they help people who need extra food or clothing or things along that line. They also have a big...they're a big help for our keen, keeping everyone's eyes on the neighborhood. I have not dealt with a high school that it was involved more than the students at Clark High School are for the rest of the community. And so I'd first like to say, congratulations to these 14 who are wonderful citizens and wonderful...well, I don't know, I guess I could still call them youngsters, can't I, until they get out of high school? And I'd like Jill to say a few words about what her school is achieving. We see here a lot of things about the public schools. There are a few gems. Maybe not as many as we would like.
Thank you, Dr. Tarkanian. One of the oldest high schools in the Las Vegas Valley, built in 1965. Due to the innovative vision of educators like Dr. Tarkanian, we've been able to beat the odds at our high school and to continue to excel academically. And these students represent the best of the best. I have to tell you, they are dedicated, committed, hardworking. They are taking the most advanced coursework available to a high school student. They are continually challenging themselves. We have students standing before us that are currently taking Calculus III, and one that took it last year and has maxed out in mathematics and now has to go to UNLV. So it's truly a wonderful thing. I'm humbled and proud to stand here and represent this amazing high school. But they don't only excel in the classroom. I want you all to know that they are all very, very involved in the community and in extracurricular activities, from Science Olympiad, HOSA, National Honor Society, Key Club, robotics, the list goes on and on. I am inspired by their hard work and dedication, but mostly their ability to do whatever it is they desire. And their energy is infectious, I have to tell you. If we had the energy of these individuals put together, we could really do anything. It's amazing to walk the hallways with these incredible, incredible students. And Mayor Goodman, I know that her children also walk the hallways of Clark High School, and I want you all to know that there is a sense of pride in having that honor to be able to attend the high school and surround ourselves with the academic achievements of these students. And I want to just give great credit to the students and also their families that support them, but mostly to the teachers because the teachers do an amazing job really providing the students with the opportunities to be successful and to compete nationally. I know many of our students are looking to leave Las Vegas and go on to college, but we're hopeful that they will come back and give back to this amazing city. So it's truly, again, an honor to stand here today and represent one of the best high schools. And we've tried to keep it a secret, but it's true, the word is getting out, Clark High School in Las Vegas. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
And Jill, you've also been one of the best, one of the best in the country, haven't you?
We have. We've won some awards.
Yes, and they've won national awards as being one of the best high schools in the country, and I'm going to mention that also. Would you have one of our honor students, please, just say a few words?
Somebody gets to say.
All right.
He's the tallest, though.
Kind of happens. All right. So I've been in Clark for four years, and it is definitely one of the most unique schools in the valley. And I am so thankful for Ms. Pendleton, for Ms. McLeese, for all the counseling staff, for all the teaching staff, for everything they've offered us. And you really can't get the opportunities you get at Clark anywhere else. There's no place else that can offer classes for people like Spencer Goodman and Frank Wan, who have to take math classes beyond what the curriculum offers. There's nothing like it in Nevada, at least, and probably anywhere else in the country. So thank you guys very much.
And thank you. Let's have a lady say a few words.
I actually transferred to Clark my sophomore year because a lot of my friends who went there told me about how amazing it was, and I really wanted to check it out. And I have to say that I do not regret one moment of attending Clark High School. Like Ted said, it's really such an opportunistic school, and you really can't have the experiences that we do here at Clark anywhere else. And I'm so thankful that we have this opportunity given to us by our wonderful administrators who really spend all their time trying to help us excel to the best that we can be. And I promise that all of us will be the very best, and thank you very much for inviting us today.
I thank you all. We're very, very proud of you, and Mr. Winfield has your certificates. Just know that we feel very honored that you represent Las Vegas, and I particularly feel very honored that you represent Ward 1. Thank you very, very much.
Congratulations, and come home after you finish your other degrees. I know you're all going on beyond four years, college and university. So good luck to you. We'll be watching you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you all.
Fabulous. As we recognize the crews and support system that helped us in the Northwest, earlier in our ceremonials, I mentioned how proud Councilman Ross was of the effort and the results of what that crew and city staff made happen out there. But because Councilman Ross wasn't with us at the time, I was assuming he wasn't going to get here until we began the regular agenda. As you can see, he's now joined us from his prior meeting. So I have something, which I was, hopefully, would have been there, but I have something special for Councilman Ross because he was out there right at the beginning. First of all, for your next time, we have an umbrella for you. And then, if you would hold these up, Mayor Pro-Tim, we want to make sure that you are well-prepared. Keep them by your front door at all times, please. I think we're going to have to...nope, the shoes aren't big enough. We're going to have to get you another pair. But the rest of it. So you are...be prepared. The scouts say, be prepared. We appreciate that you were right out there in front, and we love you, and we think you are a great leader. So congratulations. And...okay. So with that, we will get you bigger ones. But he's on a diet. So anyway, for our final item, Councilman Barlow, lucky man, is going to recognize someone special who's reached the pinnacle of his sport. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. And to Councilman Ross, when the mayor presented you with that, the first thing that came to mind was the old song, Wade in the Water. So hopefully, you don't have to do that anymore. We're looking...right. We're looking forward to rebuilding the great Northwest, Ward 6, where you represent, and making sure that we, our team, to include yourself, of course, get back out and restore all of the roadways out there so that we can have more of a transition, getting in and out of those communities once again. So...but good job, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the distinct honor of recognizing a native son. I would like to recognize Mr. Stanley Kline, if you will please come forward. And also, your family come forward, too. Come and stand with him because it most definitely takes a family affair to support some of the great works that this superstar has achieved. The mayor and members of the Las Vegas City Council would like to recognize Mr. Stanley Kline. As he was inducted into the Nevada chapter of the National Wrestling Hall of Fame on October 13, 2012, the Nevada chapter recognizes and honors individuals from the state of Nevada for their commitment as positive role models to student athletes. Stanley Kline is known as a man born to wrestle, and he has received numerous awards and accolades for his participation in tournaments throughout the years. In fact, he was a world champion at the age of 12 years old. During the 1975 World...I want to pronounce this right, Infantil, okay, Wrestling Championship in Santo Domingo, Dominican Republic, Mr. Kline secured the gold medal, helping the United States win the first title since 1969. In October of 1977, Mr. Kline was recognized by the AAU as Athlete of the Year. Stanley Kline has deep-seated roots in the Las Vegas community. He attended Lawrence Craig Elementary School, and I want to say, you graduated from Eldorado High School, absolutely, where he received, broke records in a number of letters at Eldorado High School, and was a member, of course, with the YMCA wrestling team coached by then Jerry Wagner, who was instrumental in Stanley's career, wrestling career. Stanley also participated in the National Junior Olympic Championship, where he won three gold medals in both Greco and Roman, which gained him the national honors. Stanley Kline's name will be permanently recognized on the Wall of Fame at the National Wrestling Hall of Fame and museum in Stillwater, Oklahoma. Therefore, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, before I present the proclamation, I would like to bring Mr. Kline forward to say congratulations and thank you for representing the state of Nevada and, in particular, the city of Las Vegas as a true athlete in our community. Let's give him a round of applause.
Come here.
Please say a few words.
I'd like to thank my wife, who's here with me, my mom, who was able to make it, and one of my brothers. I have six brothers and four sisters. Two of them are not with us now, but I'd also like to thank my coach, who's not here right now. His name is Jerry Wager. He ran the juvenile department here for 33 years before he retired. You would probably know him if you see the little man who's about four feet two there. I met him when I was four years old, and he kept a lot of us out of trouble, gave us something to do. And actually, me and him traveled the world together, so I want to thank him. He's not doing well right now, and I hope to see him and send him some pictures of this event. And I want to thank you for taking the time to put this together. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great recognition to present this proclamation on behalf of the mayor and city council to Stanley Kline's wrestling career and induction into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame. And at this time, we, the mayors and members of the Las Vegas City Council, do hereby proudly proclaim November 6, 2013, Stanley Kline Day in the city of Las Vegas for your true sportsmanship in our community. Thank you so very much. Come forward, Ma. Come forward. Come forward. Of course you. Now, Stanley mentioned that he had...how many brothers?
Six.
Six brothers and four sisters. How did you maintain and keep all of them in line?
God did.
Well, share with us because I know that there's a couple of us out there that only have one and two kids, and we're trying to figure out how to do that. But just share with us, what does this really mean to you, to have one of your children achieve such great achievements in athletics here in the city of Las Vegas?
Wonderful. Ever since he was a little boy, he used to hold four of the kids down at one time, a hand on each one and both legs, and he was calling me at work to my mama, tell him to turn us loose. So I was so glad to see that ad in the paper from the RJ, $12 for anybody wanting to get on the wrestling team. I said, now he can wrestle somebody else's kids. But everybody was organized. They had their own football. Everybody was at my house, always knew where my kids were because half the neighborhood was at my house. All the ones that runaways, they came to my house. They know they had to call their parents, let them know where they were, but they didn't have to go home. But this way, their parents didn't worry. But everything was organized. Everything was laid out the day before, the night before, so I didn't have to rush. I worked, went to school, taught school during the day, and worked at Tropicana 25 years. So you just have to organize. Put the kids to bed at 8:00 and 8:30, and you don't beat them to bed, let them go to bed. Get up early in the morning, get the day set. At night, I was washing and cooking food, stuffing the slow cooker in the oven. It worked out fine. I had plenty of time left, to be honest, and I went to all the games. I had plenty of time left, to be honest, and I went to all the games and footballs and everybody on Saturdays. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. That's where it starts, Mayor? All right. So, let's get a photo, if you don't mind, with the mayor and council. And Stanley, once again, congratulations to you and your great achievements.
You're the centerpiece. Right there, we'll figure out a space. You're supposed to see everybody, but sometimes you can't see their faces.
We're good? Okay.
All right, ready? Everybody in? Okay. All right. One, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Congratulations. What year at Eldorado? What year?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one. Two of our three sons wrestled and were coached by Jerry Wager, and we certainly wish him the best. Oh, my goodness. And our oldest boy, they could never find anybody skinny enough on the opposing team. He had to wrestle girls. And he always lost. He lost to the girls. We drove to Barstow, so he could face the same girls in Barstow and lost again. Very depressing, but Jerry Wager's fabulous coach. Are you coaching? Are you coaching?
No, I've been working. I actually dropped out of college to raise my two girls. I have a daughter that's E8 in Army, and I have a daughter that's a probation officer now. So, I didn't think I could go to college full-time and raise them, so I passed up about 4,000 scholarship offers, and I raised my kids. So, they're grown now, and I'm trying to find a way to give back, just by staying out of trouble and being productive. So, that's...
That's just great. You did more there. It's wonderful. We're so proud of you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go right and do our business, so we're gonna go sit down and work.
And there's water here, folks. Cracked water. I didn't want to wait till the end. It was great that you came early. There's water here.
Oh, okay. Councilman Beers, how are things going today? What's happening, Councilman Beers? Out at Tivoli, can you tell us, since we're waiting for the council members to come? Here comes our...
One.
High-booted man.
Working on a quad, one number at a time.
But you went to the opening of the next phase of...
I did, yes. They're planting steel, and they're building.
And what are they adding?
More shopping and commercial.
Wonderful. That's Tivoli Village, out at the corner of Alta and Rampart.
Yes, ma'am.
Going into second-phase development.
Yep.
And how are things out in Ward 6? What are we doing there? Horseback riding?
It is dry today.
Good.
Which is always a good sign in Ward 6. And Mayor, thank you very much for recognizing that great team earlier this morning that was out there, and Jerry Walker and his crews. I mean, he's just got... We've got the best employees, and Betsy, you know that. We've got a great team, whether it's that department or any other department, serving the residents of this city. They were out there in the muck and the rain with me, and I was surprised you didn't give me a shovel.
Well, I asked staff to get me one. They couldn't get a shovel. I wanted a shovel and a pick. They couldn't find a big enough shovel. And I knew fire had it, but somehow, we couldn't get that on.
Well, thank you very much for recognizing it.
And I know how you were sorry that you missed...
Yes.
...that moment, and obviously, I mentioned that you were at an important meeting.
Yes, I was. Very important.
But looking at the forest of the water in those pictures, the movies that we saw on TV, it was just incredible.
Well, I'm pleased to say that we are gonna start construction on the east side of US-95 down Grand Teton for that flood channel project pretty quick.
Wonderful.
So, they're gonna notice...
How about, can we do the... Happening to be Jewish that I am, there is a celebration called Tubishvat in Israel, where trees are planted, little tiny trees. Is there any effort going on where the Carpenter One fire hit to replant? Or maybe we could do something in our community, saying, "Everybody, buy a small little tree and honor someone planted for your daughter's birthday or your anniversary or something," and we could have a big celebration and replant up Mount Charleston?
I think it's a brilliant idea. I took my wife to lunch up there a couple of days ago, and you can see where the fire has burned the forest, and it did cross the road, but Mount Charleston's still as beautiful as it ever was. The Forest Service did do some dropping of hay to get mulch on the ground. Some of those locations are very difficult and very steep, but I think it's a brilliant idea, and I think this community would come together to make a concentrated effort to do just that.
Do a tree planting.
Yep.
Okay, I think we have everybody corralled. All right, so we are going into Agenda Item 10. Excuse me. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. In this Agenda Item, we will set the time, because you have other times, at 1 minute. Good morning.
Thank you. Todd Fowler, 240 North 19th Street. On public works, Items 36, 37, and 38. Great stuff. And on Item Number 18, on the provisions pertaining to the ice cream trucks, can we have a brief summary of how that's gonna change? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I have cards that have been submitted, two of them from Tasha Heath on 36 and 51, and then making mention she opposed 47, 42, 41, and 40. And, okay. And then, we also have one from Paul Moracken from the Las Vegas Metro Chamber, and that's regarding Item Number 44. So, anyone else?
Good morning, Mayor. For the record, Paul Moracken, on behalf of Las Vegas Metro Chamber Commerce, speaking on Item Number 44. The Metro Chamber supports the proposed inter-local agreement identifying the possible sharing of services between the cities of North Las Vegas and Las Vegas, and the creation of a Citizens Advisory Committee. We believe this makes sense for both cities, its citizens, and the businesses within those jurisdictions, because of the possible positive benefits associated with sharing the services, revenue enhancements, greater efficiencies, and increased service levels to citizens. This proposed collaboration is not just good for the two cities, but also for all of Nevada. Each of the mayors, councils, and city managers should be commended for this innovative thinking and approach. We appreciate those efforts. These types of agreements show stable leadership, critical thinking, and a genuine willingness to work together, so we thank you, and we urge the city council to pass this agreement this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You did that with three seconds to spare. Awesome. We will move on. Anyone else? We will now move on to Agenda Item 11. Excuse me, we will not move.
Hi. Tasha Heath. I just had a couple of questions about 36. On the match funding for these, the $28,895, where does that come from? And were the voters asked about this? Do we actually need 75 bike lockers and 500 bike racks? Where exactly will they be located? I just wanted to know where that information would be. Also, on Item 51, I feel that this puts a lot of restrictions on private property owners. I feel that, you know, maybe it needs to be reworded or better done. It says particularly that they cannot have any weddings, parties, receptions, or similar events that typically are held at banquet facilities or other facilities that is made available for holding of events on a commercial basis. I just feel that it's the property owner's right to decide.
Thank you. We will be addressing that shortly. And on the other, on Item 36, we'll be sure to keep you in mind here as we get to that. Thank you.
Pardon me, Mayor. My name's Anthony Hardin. I got a shocker for you at the end of the meeting, when you had the public comment at the end. I'm gonna tell you something that I've been holding for 50 years, and it's very important to our entire nation. Thank you.
Goodness, don't leave. We can't wait. We'll close the meeting immediately. Okay, anyone else? We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 11. Business Items for Possible Action. Any items council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, held in abeyance to a future meeting may be rock forward and enacted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items. Item Number 42, R75, 2013, staff has asked this be obeyed till November 20, 2013. Item Number 51, 2013-51, staff has asked this be stricken. Item Number 62, SUP 49539, applicant, R. Elini, owner, T.L.B.C.R., at 18 Fremont Street. Applicant has asked this be obeyed till February 5, 2014. Item Number 63, SUP 4950, applicant, owner, Lahaiam Fremont Associates, property 300, Fremont Street. Applicant has asked this be obeyed till February 5, 2014. Item Number 64, SUP 49543, applicant, Crazy Eli, Western Village, owner, Famine Limited Partnership, 316, Fremont Street. Applicant has asked this be obeyed till February 5, 2014. Item Number 65, SUP 49574, public hearing, Arlenee, owner, Schiff Enterprises, at 21 Fremont Street. Applicant has asked this be obeyed till February 5, 2014. And Item Number 66, applicant, D.R. Horton, owner, D.R. Horton, residence, Nevada, 26.4 acres, adjacent to the southeast corner of Deer Springs Way and Campbell Road. Applicant has asked this be obeyed till November 20, 2013, and that is my motion.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other additions, comments, please?
I just want to make a record, Your Honor, with your permission. On Items Number 63 and 64, Mr. Brown, J. Brown, represents the applicant. He sent letters to me, and I filed them with the clerk, asking that this be held. I noticed that Mr. Moran is in the audience. He represents the applicant on Number 62 and 65, and he may wish to make a record at this point in time, too.
He may make the record at this time in this portion, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. J.T. Moran III, seven...
Thank you.
J.T. Moran III, Moran Law Firm, 630 South 4th Street, on behalf of applicant on Items Number 62 and 65. The Mayor Pro Tem did make the appropriate request on my client's behalf. We are asking that those matters be held over. I actually thought they were being held over to the 14th of February, and I thought, "What a delight to spend Valentine's Day with you, Your Honor." In any event, that having been said, we are asking that 62 and 65 be held in abeyance to that time. We have had a number of discussions and workshops over the course of the last, I'd say, several months. They've been very, very good. I think that we're working in the right direction, and we appreciate the time of your commission, obviously, and the help of the city attorney in working towards a less-than-zero-sum situation. We believe that there can be a winner on both sides and not just a winner-and-loser situation, especially with respect to this very, very integral part of the city, that being the Fremont Street experience. So, we want to contribute, not to the problem, we want to contribute to the solution, and we are committed. And that's all I have to say, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. We're grateful, and we accept... Is that in a written form and submitted to Mr. Gerbic, or is just oral testimony?
We did not submit a letter, Your Honor, to answer your question. We are making a formal express request at this point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see we have Mr. Art.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Bill Art, Director, Economic and Urban Development. Mayor Pro Tem, forgive me, I did not hear if you had asked Item 42. We would like that held in abeyance to November 20.
I said that one.
Okay, thank you.
You did have that?
Yeah, it was on my list.
Yes.
Thank you.
To the 20th. Thank you very much. Anyone else, council? Anyone? Any other comments? Okay. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Thank you. The motion carries. Agenda Item 12, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to regular city council meetings, September 18, 2013, October 2, 2013. Is there a motion to approve, please?
Move for approval.
Thank you, this motion. Please vote. That motion carries. So, we will move on to the consent agenda here. Items 13 through 41, we are removing, which has been held in abeyance, Number 42 until the 20th of November, as requested by staff. Items therefore 13 through 41 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to pull forward Agenda Item Number 23 for discussion.
Okay. And I know in the audience, we had some interest about Agenda Item 18, Mr. Fowler, which I would... It's okay? Oh, you did speak with him. Fine, so that's done. And, okay. So, we are gonna pull forward Agenda Item 23, but therefore...
Mayor.
Yes, please.
I would like to also pull Number Item 28, 4.
28?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point, let's move on to Agenda Item 23. Yes?
I gotta make a motion.
Oh, didn't we have the motion already and pass it?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 13 through 41, except for 23 and 28.
Thank you very much. I thought we did that. I'm so excited about all of us being here. There's a motion, I think? When the computer decides there is. There we go. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. We will now move to Agenda Item 23. This subject for possible action to approve award bid number 13.28735-TF, Las Vegas Wash Middle Branch, Grand Teton Storm Drain, Durango Drive to Rainbow Boulevard, located on Grand Teton Road from Durango Drive to Rainbow Boulevard, the construction conflicts and contingency reserve set by Finance Department of Public Works. The award recommended to Las Vegas Paving Corporation, 10,007, wrong, $10,702,112, Public Work Capital Project Funds, and Councilman Ross, you've asked for this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is that flood project I had just mentioned earlier that the residents in Centennial Hills have long awaited for, to deal with the flooding on the east side of US-95 down Grand Teton from Durango to Rainbow. I'm pleased to also say, it's not agended at this time. I'm sorry, it is, but I'm pleased to say also that on Agenda Item 22, which we didn't pull forward, we're moving forward with the final design on the west side of US-95, Grand Teton and Grand Canyon, for the residents who live closer to Providence on the west side of US-95. So, that's significant. I pulled 23 forward because I think a couple of council members have some concerns, and they would like to direct some questions to staff.
And the members of the public?
And the members of the public. If anyone would like to speak on it as well.
Anyone from council wishing to make comment now, please? Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Councilman Ross, for pulling this from consent, because I've had some concerns about this bidding, but I'm not questioning that our process was flawed. It looks like we've had... It looks like we've had, you know, a clean process, but I thank the purchasing people for coming here. I think this happens so infrequently that you don't award to the lowest bidder, that I do want to make sure that... Like, this is only the second time since I've been on the council. So I want to make sure we have a brief but concise information, explanation of how this happened and why, because it's kind of unusual. The reasons for turning it down were technical, but nevertheless, legal and required. So can we please have that explanation?
Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. And to your question, Commissioner Coffin...
And would you state your name and your department, please? Thank you.
Yoli Jones, Purchasing and Contracts. Yes, this bid was reviewed after we received a protest regarding some of the description as it related to the self-performance of work. After going back and reevaluating the bid, we did find that there was an administrative error made on the listing of the 1%, 5% subcontractors list. And based on the new law that passed, it requires a little bit more specific description of what is required to be self-performed. And after discussing it with a contractor, they determined they made an administrative error in some middle of their bid. And based on the state law, this is something that we as purchasing and the council cannot just waive because it is a serious error because the intent of the law is to go ahead and protect both the citizens of Las Vegas as well as the prime contractors and, in particular, the subcontractors.
If I could just continue, Mayor.
Please.
I'm aware, and some members of the council are aware, of the continuous war between general contractors and subcontractors. And that war is fought at the legislature every two years. I've been part of that, I've seen it. And so the law, which was passed just in this last session, four or five months ago, and only became effective, what, a couple of weeks before this bid went out? So it appears that the winning bidder, who had the lowest bid by 700,000 or 800,000, really made a technical mistake, probably didn't have the lawyers, as many lawyers as Las Vegas Paving did. But it is beyond our control, as I understand, that we must award to the second lowest bidder and uphold the protest. The first protest we upheld was for good reason because that was two years ago, and the bidder wasn't a good bidder. It had a bad record of things. And so we really find two good bidders competing here, and of course, a lot of others. But the idea is that simply they didn't list the subcontractors that they wished to do the work for them as general contractors. And so it boils down to the law being passed to try to stop so-called bid shopping or pressure being put on subcontractors. Of course, I don't know how I feel about that, you know, but it seems like it makes them more competitive, but nevertheless, that is the law, we must conform to that. But in essence, this was a good bid, and it was, that's going to be thrown out, and it would have saved us a lot of money. But we have to go the other way. So it's too bad. I hope that we counsel people who ask for bid forms on this particular kind of thing so that the firm with the best contracting skill, and not necessarily the best lawyers, wins the bid, because this is a fine point upon which to have to make a decision.
And Commissioner... Excuse me, Councilman Coffin, I'm glad you brought that up because we did seriously look at our forms, and what we're doing is to put a stopgap to that. We have modified our forms that require to specifically make that statement so there's no question or no issue if they listed themselves to self-perform their work. It's very clear what the intent is. They have to initial on the form as well as sign the form that they understand that anything that's listed below that statement will be performed by the subcontractors, and they're performing the rest of the work.
Thank you very much, Yoli. I appreciate your testimony on this, and I don't know if anybody else has any questions. It's not in my ward, it's going to be Councilman Ross's business, and it's obviously desperately needed, and I'm glad we're accelerating this thing. So thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And did you have anything? Could you announce who you are and your department, too? And did you have anything to add, please?
No, John Rendell, Deputy City Attorney, just here to support or answer any questions.
Okay, nothing additionally. Okay, thank you very much. So would you like to make a motion to approve? Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Coffin, for your inquiries into the process. I'm keenly aware of the issues and challenges that have always faced governments in regards to the bidding practices, especially with new NRS laws trying to keep it as local as possible. I would move, Your Honor, and counsel, to approve agenda item 23.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Motion carries. Thank you. And Councilman Barlow, you asked for agenda item 28, for possible action to approve a third amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Las Vegas and the Andre Agassi Charitable Foundation to utilize the Doolittle Community Center located at 1950 Jay Street for conducting various recreational and educational programs for the benefit of the children attending the Andre Agassi College Preparatory Academy. This is Ward 5, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I asked for this item to be pulled forward because of the strong relationship that the Andre Agassi Foundation has had with the City of Las Vegas, in particular, the Doolittle Community Center, as far as a shared partnership, as far as our fields and pool area and amenities that are offered through our recreational facility at Doolittle. Looking at how we have the contract structured at this point, there's some opportunity that I believe, if in fact the Agassi Foundation agrees, from a parking standpoint, I've just noticed and observed just over the years since we've had this contract in place, I believe since the onset of 2007, was the first year that we've developed this MOU. It would really help the City of Las Vegas out, specifically the staff at Doolittle, if in fact we can possibly allocate a few spaces just for staff parking so that it would free up some additional parking during the day, not, of course, during the hours that would impede the ingress and egress of the school coming in and out, but possibly along the south wall is what I'm looking at as far as where I've always seen available spaces, and seeing how we can structure that into the MOU as well so that we can really share in the true partnership as far as your structural needs from a student standpoint and our structural needs from a parking standpoint, which will help to ease some of the tensions because we're underparked in that specific area right at Jay and Lake Mead. So I just wanted to tee that opportunity up to see if that would be something that we can discuss, to have also a part of this MOU moving forward.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Councilman Barlow, Francisco Aguilar, the Andre Agassi Foundation for Education, 3883 Howard Hughes Parkway, 8th floor. We're happy to discuss, as I mentioned yesterday, where the City of Las Vegas has been an incredible partner with Agassi Prep, and we want to continue that relationship and be as good of a partner as we can for the neighborhood. So definitely open to the discussion. There is a document that's existed from 2000, which is the actual parking agreement between Doolittle and Agassi Prep, and that may be the more appropriate agreement, or we can work it into this document as well.
Okay. I haven't seen that document. Which document are you referencing?
It's one that's existed since...
So we have two separate MOUs? We have a parking MOU and a...
We have a shared services type of agreement with Doolittle, and then we have the parking agreement as well.
Okay. And why isn't that under one umbrella? Why is it broken out like that, Larry?
Counsel, there are actually three agreements. There's a lease for the property itself, which is where the building and parking lot is located. Then subsequent to that, there was an agreement when the parking lot was built to share some parking. And for instance, the staff is permitted to use the parking lot from 4 till 11 on school nights or really any night of the week. And then this MOU we're talking about today is actually for shared use of facilities. It does two things. It shares facilities between the two entities, and then it also increases the fees we charge for swimming lessons at Doolittle.
Right. But my question is, why can't we have all of those MOUs under one umbrella so that we can be operating from one document? Is there a reason as to why we have three MOUs?
I would assume it's just a matter of timing when things happened over the years.
Okay. And so I would actually like to keep it seamless and efficient. I would actually like to see those MOUs collapse under one umbrella. And maybe, Brad, you can direct me as to how we merge these three so that we can all be looking at one document versus the foundation having to come back every so often to talk about the parking two years from now or a year from now, and then two years from now they'll be back, going back over this again. I would like for them to only come back when they need to so we can talk about the entire structure of their contract versus three times in a year. That doesn't make any rhyme or reason as to why they need to continue to come back three times a year to talk about three different MOUs.
I understand, Councilman. All I can say is we're only agended for this particular item today. I would recommend you take a vote on this item. With respect to the three things, I think the two MOUs may well be collapsible into one agreement. That would be the parking and the other agreement. The lease has to remain separate, that can't be collapsed into it. But we'll get to work on it after the meeting today.
Okay, then I would like to direct your staff to work on that for me so that we can at least start to minimize some of the contracts to make it seamless, because it really makes no sense for them to have to continue to come back to address these items like that. So I understand the lease component. So if you'll work with my office and also, Cisco, if you'll join in on those conversations so that we can pull this together, that would be helpful. And it'll help you as well. That way you don't have to come back as often. We can just basically get it knocked out in one swipe. And maybe, Brad, what we can also do as another directive is try to keep them as tight as possible as far as when these contracts come back, so that he's not coming back two or three times a year where he can possibly have those two items, the lease agreement plus the parking... What was it? The parking? What was the third?
Swimming and the fees.
One was a lease, and then one is a parking agreement. And, Mr. Hart, I'm going to ask you to help me with the third one.
Oh, the service sharing.
Exactly, the MOU for the joint use of the show.
Yeah, so maybe what we can do, the service sharing and the parking combined, where we line it up with the lease agreement as far as when those come back. So he or the foundation will be coming back on that agenda as day to address both those items on the same day. So if we can do that, it'll help to streamline this process moving forward. Okay? Thank you. So having said that, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval and thank the Andre Agassi Foundation for being a great and wonderful community partner in the Las Vegas Valley. Thank you, Cisco.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. The motion carries. And at this point, I would like to pull forward, which is missing from my file. I have nothing. I am missing 43 to 46. I believe. Got them. They're out of order. I would like to pull forward, I see we have the honorable, very honorable Mayor of North Las Vegas with us, Mayor Lee, accompanied by Tom Riley, and accompanied by Jeff Buchanan, interim city manager from North Las Vegas, and look forward to hearing from staff.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. For the record, Ted O'Levis, Chief of Staff. The item before you is to consider the subject interlocal with North Las Vegas. I have a brief PowerPoint that I won't go through right this second. Before I start, as you mentioned, Your Honor, we have Mayor Lee and his team here, and he'd like to provide some opening comments before we start the presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Lee.
Welcome.
I'm very happy to be here today. I have a lot of friends in the city council, and I'm glad to call you guys, colleagues, and in the future, associates and business partners. As I was preparing to run for Mayor of North Las Vegas, I was in this stage of, ah, maybe I should, maybe I shouldn't. Spent 14 years of public service, let somebody else do it, you know? And I went by Rancho High School, my old high school, and I had re-tiled that school. And I thought, ah, it's not the same old Rancho, but it's still my high school. And I thought, you know, my town has a lot of vibrancy still. It's still an exciting place. We have so many opportunities. And I realized that if the school were to call me up and said, John, send us $100, every alum I was going to send $100, we're going to build a dome stadium over the school, probably not a good idea, but I'd send them $100 because I had a great time. And think of your hometown, or your school, or your church, or something. And as I was thinking of that happy thought, I thought, you know, my town doesn't need my money, it needs my time. And I look at each and every one of you and realize, you serve the same goals in life that I do. You know, we could do a lot of other things, hey, Dave, but this is very, very important. And so I threw my name into the race. And as I started getting information, I was talking to my good friend, Councilman Ross, and I say, Steve, I don't know if this ever happened before, but I think I might need some specific kind of help, people that might be able to help me get through this situation. And I was always concerned that North Las Vegas was in its own little sandbox all by itself over here, but I didn't understand the dynamics sometimes of the local government. And as I got elected, I called Steve back and he said, Steve, I realize we must talk. You have the expertise and things that I don't have over here. We have damaged ourselves so much in this recession that we don't have a lot of the people to do these jobs, and if we do have the people, we're probably not doing best practices. So Steve set up a meeting with myself, your wonderful city manager, Betsy, and the honorable Mayor Goodman, and they had me come... I went up to the office, almost demanded the appointment, and they sat down, how can we help you? And I thought, well, do you really mean that? And they go, yeah, we want to help you, you know? And I said, Carolyn, this is going to be a big ask, but I need you to send every one of your directors over to North Las Vegas for six months. You have to come over and help us, and here's the particular reason why. If you don't help us, there is a great chance that we are going to have a major blow-up in North Las Vegas, which is going to affect the whole region. You know, right now in the banking industry, North Las Vegas is redlined. You know, we're not getting a lot of money into North Las Vegas yet, so they see some changes. If we go under, it's going to redline the whole region. We are part of the success of this region. 55% of North Las Vegas has not been built out yet. We are the future of the valley. All roads to success in this valley now go through North Las Vegas. And as I looked around to figure who could help me, I realized that the greatest help I had was two miles away from my office building. I looked out my office one day, and I saw you guys sitting over here, and I go, that is what I want to be. But I don't want to be them exactly, I just want to have the success that they're having. We have our own identity. So North Las Vegas is in a great situation to move this region forward. We're very, very excited about it. There's probably things that we could do with you that are shared services. And I started thinking, as I was a state senator, I cared about the whole state, and I still do. But I'm elected for the corporate boundaries of North Las Vegas now. The things that I do there are more important than what's happening on Carson Street. I don't worry about Carson Street, Fremont Street, as much as I do Main Street in North Las Vegas now. And to do a shared services contract with you of certain things that we could look at and see if they made sense, if they harm North Las Vegas, we're not interested. If they harm Las Vegas, we're not interested. But if they come together and we can do these things together, why wouldn't we do these things? Henderson has reached out to me and said, John, we're in, too. We think that there's things that you two guys do that we don't do right. The county called and said, why are you leaving us out of it? Now, particularly, I will be honest with you, the reason I came to the city first is because I get along with you guys quite well. I know how you think. I know you can get seven votes on things. I mean, you know, it's a very collegial group. I can bounce ideas off. The missing compartment was, how do I relate with you and understand how to do this? So I thought, I need some luminaries to work for me. I hired the CFO, Switch Communications, to come over. I hired the best battalion chief, who is retiring from Henderson, to come over. But I was still missing a very, very valuable piece. And I thought, who is the one person in this whole valley that everybody respects? I called Tom Riley. Tom, I need you to come over and be my city manager. He said, I can't do it, but let's figure out what I can do. And so we started thinking together. We came up with this plan that maybe through Tom and his expertise and leadership, this might be the best thing to do. Now, I don't want you to think you're saving North Las Vegas. I want you to think about the region of what we're doing. I'm privileged to be on some very... I'm privileged to be on some very, very important boards with a lot of you on here. I'm, I'm on the Las Vegas Convention Authority Board. And I think this year, probably twenty million people will come here for family reunions, for every single thing in the world that can happen in this valley. And we'll attract them in and we'll think, boy, we're doing great. And Rosemary Visili, I'll sit at the airport, will say, forty million people flew into Las Vegas again, and they will. And we'll think, boy, we're doing great. But if we err and not realize that North Las Vegas and what happens there doesn't affect you, you're wrong. If I go down, the bond ratings go down. Everything happens. You can't separate the love I have for you or the friendship I have for you just on money. It's, we're all tied together, you know, in, in this, in this thing called we, you know? So North Las Vegas is looking for an opportunity for six months to work alongside of you, bring Henderson in the group, bring Clark County in the group where, where feasible. And the last point is this, Nellis Air Force Base right now is suffering. The sequester has killed it. They've shut down their movie theater. They can't afford to get the new projectors. Their library is closed. They're not watering the golf course. There's no bowling. They can't put the bowling into it. They're just winding down the bowling alley. They're going to sit on a shared services committee of individuals that will be on that committee. How can we help Nellis Air Force Base? Forty thousand people indirectly through family or, you know, people work out there. So Las Vegas is not on its own here. We are all together. When we talk about educational system things now, stuff, we talk about what's happening down south to all of us, to all our schools. The water that flows through my pipes flows through your pipes. We are connected. I am very, very excited to offer the opportunity to work with you to help repair North Las Vegas. Decisions were made there that were prudent, but who would have expected the challenges that came along at the time? I might have made a couple of those decisions myself, maybe not all three of them, but I might have, you know, done one or two, you know? And so I'm not here to cast blame. I'm here to say, well, here's where we're at. We're excited. For the next twenty-five years, why don't we work together instead of us being over there all by ourselves, not working together? Maybe I shouldn't be in the library business. I don't know yet. I need to find out from the library business. Maybe I shouldn't be in the golf business. Maybe I shouldn't do some things that we're doing. If I don't have you to reach out to, then we're going to continually be dragging down the region through the non-efforts of North Las Vegas. So I'm here today to tell you, North Las Vegas sees a unique value right now of the southern Nevada local governments coming together and doing things regionally now. When we go to the legislature, we should go as a group up there and do those things. Ms. Goodman and I and the other four mayors all got together and had lunch recently at Jerry's Nugget. And we've decided that we owe it to everybody here to start having these kind of meetings. It wouldn't be odd to me to see city council people reaching out and having lunch together, you know, who share boundaries with each other and things like that. The more that we do together, the more successful we can be. I want everybody who does business in North Las Vegas to become a millionaire because of my property values go up. I can supply the parks. I can do the things, you know? I want that opportunity over there for the whole valley to be successful. And with that, I think, aren't you supposed to say amen after something like that? But we are here with no guile, but we are here telling you, we have things to offer also. And it's not just save North Las Vegas, it's that's build the region together. And Madam Chair, I'll stand for any questions if you'd like.
If you would, and I think we want to hear from our city management, but we have two questions immediately because they just can't wait to ask you and we're so thrilled. Mayor Protam Anthony.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lee, for coming down. So today, we're going to have a presentation and, and discuss whether we should go into this interlocal agreement. And then you're going to vote on it tomorrow night. But yesterday, you had a, a special meeting to discuss this. What, I guess what I need from, from the discussion yesterday, because I wasn't there, a kind of a sense is your entire city council on board with this based on your discussion yesterday? Is Tom Riley on board? Is your acting city manager on board? Because I know you're here and you're really excited about this, but I kind of want some sense of that based on your meeting yesterday.
Great question. Unequivocally, one hundred percent happy to be with you. We didn't carry a vote on it yesterday because we're voting tonight, but we had the five votes to vote there. We just wanted to give the public another chance to come if they had any questions. But we are a fist. We are on board with this and looking forward to the relationship.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Barlow.
Mayor, you're right. After your speech, we all should have said amen. And let me tell you why. You've just stood here and did what mayors before you should have done. This conversation of regional, regionalizing our communities has been a backroom conversation for many, many years. And I applaud you for bringing this to the forefront because this is exactly how we should be thinking as elected officials, because you're absolutely correct. North Las Vegas is tied to Las Vegas. Las Vegas is tied to Henderson, Clark County. Clark County is tied to Henderson. We are all one. And it's time out, as you very well articulated that today, for us to continue to operate on our own individual silos and islands. If North Las Vegas falls, it only place more stress on the city of Las Vegas in a number of areas. I truly believe from the onset that there's a number of areas that we can look at, and I truly believe that there will be a number of areas that we can truly partner from a regional, from a regional standpoint, not just with North Las Vegas, but with Clark County and Henderson alike. And I'm glad that this conversation is, is in the forefront. There's light on it. And I believe that we need to take advantage of the opportunities on behalf of all residents throughout southern Nevada. Yes, we have boundaries on our cities. Yes, we must protect the tax base as well as the bonding capacities and everything else that our taxpayers elect us to do on their behalf. But there are things that we can do to make southern Nevada the strongest and the, and the most equitable, balanced communities and seamless as possible. When we leave Las Vegas and enter North Las Vegas, it should be seamless. Our communities should look the same way on one side of town as they, as they are on the other side of town. When people arrive from the outside of Las Vegas, arrive to the inside of Las Vegas, they don't say, I arrived to North Las Vegas, Clark County, Henderson. They say, I arrived to Las Vegas. When we go away and visit other places, we say that we live in Las Vegas. And it's not just our city as far as the boundaries geographically, but when people think of Las Vegas, they think of Las Vegas from mountain to mountain, mountain to mountain, our valley as being Las Vegas. And we need to really, from a regional standpoint, really take advantage of the opportunity that's in front of us right now in order to do that. And so I want to commend you for bringing this forward. I'm looking forward to working with you and the entire North Las Vegas council to include our city management team and everyone that has come together to bring out the opportunities that, that are sitting right in front of us. I truly believe that they're sitting right in front of us and we have an opportunity to, to really make a major, major progress moving forward in relation to really tying up a lot of the, not shared services, but the overlap of services that have continued for many, many years going forward. And I would like to see some of that taken off the table. And so you most definitely have a champion in me to work with you and your entire team to see what we can do. And Tom, thank you so very much for stepping up to the plate and, and leading and guiding this forward on behalf of, of the elected bodies as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. And this is the first time all seven of us have sat together to discuss this item. And a couple of us have talked, because we have the briefing system, you know, under the open meeting law, so we're, we're very careful about that. But we definitely, we haven't all gotten together at once. So it's, in a sense, it's new for the body. But I, I've heard about it. I was surprised when you came into our building in July, I think it was, and you rushed in and rushed out and you didn't say hi. And I, I called you up and yelled at you and said, now, look, we served together for many years in the legislature. You're up here and now all of a sudden you're a big mayor and you're going to talk to my mayor, but not me. So I understood the pecking order had changed. But I, I know you very, very well, John, and we've served together and been in a lot of scrapes together. And I'll tell you, I've always appreciated the fact that you were an independent thinker in the legislature. There was no question that you had an open mind on everything. So for you to come in and be shocked about what you saw and then to be able to say, we need help, or we need assistance, or we think we could all benefit from some kind of collaboration, I, I'm just, I was speechless because that just doesn't get done around here. You've really broken the ice. And I grew up here, so, you know, I remember North Las Vegas was North Town, and that was it. And it was a derogatory term. And it's far from that now. It's a beautiful city. And it has so much potential. So you know, we want to make sure that there are no rumors about somehow Las Vegas having to bail out North Las Vegas or in some way have it appear to be that North Las Vegas would fail without us or that, well, we know there's a remedy. I mean, if you do get in serious trouble, the state can step in, but that's a terrible thing to do. And so that's the last resort. It means you've already exhausted all possibilities. Well, now you've trying another possibility before the state would, would even consider coming in. So I appreciate the fact, what you're doing. And I worked with you so long. I know we have another colleague, we have a couple of colleagues, Senator Kears in the audience, not for this subject, but he's absorbing this. And Senator Beers is up here as well. We know you for a man who is a man of his word. And, and I like the members of your council because I do serve with them. And I hope it is mutual. So there's a lot of trust already between the two bodies. And I know you've got your hands full dealing with our city manager because you, you have a lot of energy, I know. But ours has a lot too. So she'll move fast and help you and hopefully your team will be able to learn a lot from them and we will learn a lot from you and we'll both save money in the process. Because after all, that's, that's the biggest opportunity here. It's not somehow, we're going to help somebody. It's a, we're going to help you help us because we can make money together if we cut costs and/or at least provide adequate services for a reasonable price. So again, welcome to the council and thrilled to see you here. Again, I'm glad you didn't give up politics too early and now we're both in the same boat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Councilman, talk to him.
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. I am for this, all of us working together. And I think we in the city have been for it for a long time. In fact, as Betsy knows, I tried to talk with some individuals and tell them, we don't want to take you over, you know? Don't be scared. We just want to work together. However, I, I don't want to do anything that endangers what we've sacrificed for, for the citizens and pay the taxes in Las Vegas. And I think, Betsy, you're going to have to be very, very careful about that. They have Tom O'Reilly to look out for the interests of North Las Vegas, and I guess you're the one that's going to have to look out for our interests. And it doesn't mean we're going to be one-sided here and one-sided there. I just know, for example, in urban development, we need so much help right now, but that's one of the areas that we're going to be sharing personnel. And we're very, very far behind in urban development. You know, I go through my ward, I see it. I go through other wards and I see it, the, you know, boarded up buildings, the restaurants that have closed and things like that. So I don't know where the extra help is coming from that area because I think we need so much more right now of what we have. That's something you'll have to really watch very carefully.
Mayor, if I may, I, I think the presentation that we're going to go through this morning may very quickly help address some of the concerns that you've expressed here, Councilwoman, and also build on some of the earlier comments. I, I think we have a lot of work to do and we've had a strong partnership with the city of North Las Vegas over the last several years. And quite frankly, our shared services arrangement that we have for jail operations helped both cities significantly, both from a revenue standpoint for us in being paid for the use of our facilities and for staffing that we've been providing to help ensure that North Las Vegas could still have a corrections function. And so there are ways, I think, Councilwoman, that we can identify areas that are ripe for partnership, where there's mutual benefit, and hopefully we get better performance out of it. You know, part of this is trying to get to that next level of performance between the two cities. And we've got a process in place that I believe will help us make sure that those kinds of questions that you're bringing up are answered. So that not only are we exploring the topic thoroughly, we've got a citizens committee who will be looking at it. We've got outside consultation to help make sure that we've explored the, the topic area thoroughly before we would bring anything to this council or Mayor Lee's council for final consideration for an agreement. So I think we've built in quite a bit of fail-safe into the process that will help keep us from overcommitting, having an unequal deal or our, our inability to continue to perform at the current levels. And I think those are going to be really robust conversations to have and, and hopefully we'll be able to make some significant progress over the six months that this agreement envisions that we would take to do that.
You know, I had mentioned to you with the detention center, the concerns that some of our workers had there, and maybe they weren't working as hard as they could have worked originally, which was something that was brought up. But on the other hand, it was work that Nellis Las Vegas usually did that did come down to our workers. I'm just trying to make sure that we look at this very, very carefully. It's a wonderful thing. Idealistically, it gives you chills. You want to do this. I just want to be very careful that we protect our workers and that our citizens.
And I will say this, I've, I've made a commitment to all our union leaders that if we're talking about workload impacts or workplace safety issues, they're going to be at the table with us.
Any other comments, questions for council? I'm going to wait also and just hear the presentation if we could. And then, of course, for Mr. Riley, Mr. Buchanan, and if you would, please go ahead.
Would you mind if I sat down?
No, we'd like you to stand for the next five hours.
My dear friend, helps this question. I'm, I just contacted Nellis Air Force Base. We're getting a list of all the contractors that do business out there. We're going after new business. If I find out some business wants to leave Henderson and come to North Las Vegas, I call Andy Haven and say, Andy, go talk to those guys. Because you have people out there that have jobs. We don't want to take old and transfer businesses back and forth among each other. We want new industry in this town. I'm heading to the Reagan National Library Friday to meet with Lockheed Martin, some other people. These are things that are going to enhance the whole project. When it comes to your, your concern is, there are people who, it'll take a long time for them to come to North Las Vegas. You know, our redevelopment and stuff like that, completely different than yours. But where we can help is where you have two baseball fields and we have two baseball fields on the other side of the line, we can now get more tournaments for you, coed, fast pitch, slow pitch, all the summer games that they play in Phoenix. We can let you use those two baseball fields because you, if you win a game here, you can't have a field more than a mile away to the next one so you can keep these tournaments moving. You can't have one in Green Valley and one in North Las Vegas because people will travel too much, you know? We, we have those opportunities. Commissioner Sisalak needs more basketball arenas for the Nike tournament and things like that. We hope that we take nothing from you, but we start offering more so we can't use it, you can have it. It's not so much we win, you win, it's, it's we all win, you know? And so I'm looking forward to hearing what your challenges are. And if we get somebody, you know, Lois has got something going up Charleston she's trying to do. In essence, I want all of us to be the mayor of Las Vegas or the mayor of North Las Vegas. That, that's my goal. And when you have an issue, it's my issue. All right? But I promise you this, we are not taking any of your employees in this exercise. And we don't want to lose any of our employees. You know, we are committed to the family that you have as we have. So whether people in Las Vegas know or not, you can't get hired at Las Vegas after this project for a while, you know? Let us see if we can help you with your problems, you're helping us with ours.
Thank you.
Thank you, please.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Now that you've had the cart, let me give you the horse. Okay? I have a, a minor change that I need to read into the record. I have a, a minor change that I need to read into the record. On the last page of the interlocal is a list of participants on the proposed shared services committee. At the time that the agenda was posted, there was one member that we had not confirmed yet. And so the final member for the record is Lieutenant Colonel Barry Cornish with Nellis Air Force Base, and this change has been coordinated with the clerk's office. So everything is in order with that change. So you have the latest and greatest. So let's talk about what this interlocal contract includes. Briefly, it has a, an approval date of today, as Mayor Lee mentioned. They had a meeting last night at 4:30 and had a discussion and received a similar presentation. They are going to be meeting this evening to have a second discussion. The term of the agreement is from today through May 31st, and essentially, there's three elements to this interlocal contract. And one is the consulting and assessment piece, the second is the independent consultant, which, as Mayor Lee mentioned, was Tom Riley, and finally, the third component is the shared services committee. So the first area that we'll go through briefly, in terms of the City of Las Vegas, Betsy, of course, is leading our team, she will work very closely with Mr. Riley. One of the first steps that we're doing is, we want to have an independent financial analysis performed. Mark Vincent is working on that with North Las Vegas to identify a firm, to perform that financial analysis, to determine exactly where we're at. The compensation for the City of Las Vegas is either through the shared savings that we realize, or up to $50,000 if no agreements are approved. Boiled down to the top three, why are we doing this? Bottom line is generate revenue, reduce costs, and stabilize service delivery levels. That's it. That's, that's why we would enter into this agreement. And that, of course, improve, enhance, or restore service levels, want to minimize any service degradation at North Las Vegas, and enhance performance and minimize risk. At a higher level, and incorporated into the contract are those same things, said a little differently, revenue enhancements, increased efficiency, stabilized service, programmatic reviews, looking at various governance modeling, and any strategic economic The areas that we're going to be exploring, we've talked about these in the past, it ranges from economic development and redevelopment to purchasing, library services, and courts. I think the thing to mention here, you've seen all of these areas, we are not limited to the areas that are on your screen. If there's other opportunities in other departments, then we're going to look at those areas as well. So this is kind of an A to Z review. The independent consultant that is hired and paid for by North Las Vegas, they're going to be providing, or Mr. Riley in this case, is going to be providing direction and guidance to us. He's going to report and consult with North Las Vegas elected officials. They're going to take a look at what we've come up with and some of the results, and also going to oversee the advisory committee. And most importantly, he'll mediate any disagreements or concerns. The shared services committee is made up of 11, 11 members that are incorporated as a part of this agenda item. They are going to review the recommendations that we come up with, so the departments will work together, come up with some potential recommendations, if there are some, bring that jointly together before this shared services committee to vet it there, and then if appropriate, then it would come to you, as Betsy mentioned earlier. So finally, and finally, they would make the recommendations to both the councils if they felt appropriate. Some of the members of the committee are listed here. That final member, as I mentioned, was Lieutenant Colonel Cornish with Nellis. I believe that we have a few members here, Hannah, Hannah's here, and...
Glenn and David.
Glenn, Glenn's here.
And Dave Steinman.
And David Steinman, our ex-council member, Mr. Steinman. So those are some of the members of, Tom has talked to each one of these, they are ready, willing, and excited to serve in this capacity, so we're looking forward to working with them throughout this process. With that, I'll turn it over to Betsy.
We're, we're ready to answer any questions that you may have. I know that Tom and Jeff are here too, as well as Mayor Lee, so happy to answer anything that maybe we haven't answered at this point.
Okay, Councilman Ross.
I, I don't have any questions for your, you, Ms. Frewell or Mr. Levis. I, I do want to say a blanket statement. Mayor Lee, through our mayor, Mayor Goodman, to you, Mayor Lee, we're here, we're finally here. This is monumental, this is historic in my mind. This isn't Las Vegas saving North Las Vegas. I think this is both cities recognizing opportunities for the years to come, and I think we're going to reach those goals. Mayor Lee, you said, you know, "We serve the same people, the water flows the same water in my pipes as your pipes." The same people. And Councilman Barlow was, was right on the money about seamless transition. Ward Six shares the largest border with North Las Vegas. We are sister cities, and Ms. Frewell, I don't know of any other cities in the country that have come to some kind of dis- discussion about sharing services, about making both cities vibrant and livable and, and successful. And that's what this is about. It's about the residents, it's about our businesses. And Mr. Muradkin, your comments at the beginning of the meeting reflective of the Metro Chamber, right on the mark. I mean, everybody gets this. And those of you that are here that are going to serve on this committee, Ms. Brown, Mr. Christensen, Mr. Councilman Steinman, thank you for doing this, because you're going to be part of something huge. This is going to be a model, I believe, for other communities, Ms. Frewell. I think the leadership of your team, Jeff's team, Mr. Riley's team, and our, our two mayors and their leadership will really show something significant will come of this. Mr. Levis, the presentation was wonderful, because it's important we let the public understand exactly what we're trying to do. There's no hidden agendas here. This is all about a re, you know, two cities, sister cities on a regional level, trying to do the best things for the right reasons. Protect taxpayer dollars, stretch that taxpayer dollar, and we've talked about that a lot, we always talk about stretching that dollar. I think there's going to be great opportunities for that, Mayor Lee. I honestly do. And providing that comprehensive togetherness after your prayer, I mean, it, it's going to happen, and I'm just so thrilled to death that we're finally to this day, and I'm looking forward to the results and recommendations of the committee. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And of course, just briefly, I know as you came into the office and we sat in that initial meeting, I couldn't have been more delighted, because we've been talking forever here. As we get so many people coming in from around the country and around the world that want to be part of what's going on in our community, and we are with our 135 square miles that we have here in the City of Las Vegas, that through shared work perhaps, we can see ways to be mutually beneficial to each other, if not to the entire Southern Nevada and state. So it is something, and I, I just want to reassure everybody, this is an exploration at this point. Everything will be very open and available, this isn't being done for any other reason than to see a way, with the help of this wonderful advisory committee that's been selected, that are very knowledgeable, to explore all the different avenues and select perhaps the top five, maybe it's going to be 10. But this is a time of exploration, and I think we've had such a wonderful revival and renaissance begin here in Las Vegas, that it's only appropriate that our wonderful staff help where they can and have conversations and look very thoroughly with the mayor and Tom Riley and Jeff Buchanan, to see where these would benefit both. So I'm very excited about it. I am also, and, and share concerns for obviously our citizens, their tax dollars, but we're all sharing the same with property taxes down, and looking for innovative ways that we can make our lives of all of our communities much stronger and richer. So I am very much assured, and I know Mayor Lee, and I have spoken often about this, a great confidence that this is the right thing to explore and not put our heads in the sand and just say, "No, we're just not going to do anything." And I think as we go through it, trusting our city manager and our staff, Mr. Levis, that we will be open, and we will make sure that we are being very cautious, but that we're not moving at a snail's pace, the governments tend to do, and that we have the buy-in from all the elected officials and the support of all the retained employees and leadership in both of our cities. So I'm very excited about it. I think it's the right move for us, because we have ways that we can strengthen ourselves here in the City of Las Vegas, and know that, as Mayor Lee said, that, that this is going to be very mutually beneficial. And if it's not, we're not doing it. And I'm sure your council won't want it any more than ours will. So it's going to be open, and we are going to be kept up to date, and you've selected a great committee to move forward. So at this point, yes, aha, be careful.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to vote against this, and I want to get a couple, a couple of my reasons on the record. Initially, this sounded like a consulting deal, something I know a little about, I've been a consultant most of my adult life, and the contract was finally revealed to us about a week ago. My eyes immediately went to the compensation for our consulting, and I believe that the minimum amount in the contract is this $50,000. We've expended more than that just getting to this point, and so I'm deeply concerned that there's not an equitable relationship here. I don't believe that we have people sitting around the city manager's office on their hands, looking for things to do. If we do, then we need to trim our staff back there, because I would remind the council that this very government, not just North Las Vegas, but the City of Las Vegas, is currently operating yet again with a deficit budget. We're spending more than we're taking in every single year. We're going to have to get to the point where we don't do that anymore, and I'm not sure I see this moving us that direction. About a year ago, I was invited to a series of meetings that Speaker Kirkpatrick held, Uent Mayor, with the mayors, John, your predecessor, of all the cities and a couple of county commissioners and a council member from each of the cities as well. And it, and it became pretty apparent there that everyone at every one of those meetings had a very keen understanding of what North Las Vegas's problem was, except for North Las Vegas. Completely ignorant of the very real problems that they face. We even know what the cause of the problem is. No one's talked about it here, but they were making enough profit off their sewer system, just as the City of Las Vegas charges our citizens for sewer services, so does North Las Vegas, and they were making enough profit off of their sewer system that they were able to pull about 20 million bucks a year into their general fund for many years. And then they made a decision that resulted in a large increase in their cost of treating wastewater, and that profit disappeared, because their costs went up, but their revenue didn't. So they're running now with essentially a $20 million a year lack of cash that they used to have before. That's a big number. We've talked a bit about the sharing of services out at our jail, but really, when you dig into that, the savings is much more due to decisions at North Las Vegas to not trim back their jail staff, in tandem with the federal government trimming back the number of contract prisoners they were giving North Las Vegas. And so they ended up way overstaffed, unable to make the hard decision, and as a result, they made an even harder decision and now sub their jail out to us. That's an opportunity for some savings, maybe there are more. We should continue to explore those opportunities for savings, but not if it comes at the detriment of my city and my taxpayers, which is what's going to happen if we turn even a third of the collective attention of the executive staff that works for our city manager, turn their attention away from the City of Las Vegas. That's my very big fear. As well, again, everybody seems to know what the problem is. I haven't heard North Las Vegas acknowledge what the problem is. That would seem to me a predicate to moving forward with any serious consulting agreement. Big picture, I understand where this goes, I think everybody understands where this goes, and the problem with spending more than you're taking in, cleaning out your savings account, is that it comes a point where you can't do that anymore, and you have lost any flexibility to deal with the problem, because you've seen all your savings go away. And I'm concerned that we're to that point with North Las Vegas, that this is a Band-Aid on a broken leg, and that tax, the tax, state tax department needs to step in here and, raise revenue or decrease costs, as they have done before, as they are required to do by state law. So for those reasons, I will be the lone contrary, no vote today.
I would like to, I mean, I think your points are unbelievably well-taken. I sat at those meetings, the conversation continued as you said so accurately. There was no realization or open realization, there was no sharing of information, there was no information given about the financial status. And so these are issues that I think are, are really warranting a response, and I don't, if you'd like to address them, Ms. Frewell, first, I know that Mayor Lee has, has inherited what went before, and his efforts, and I don't mean to speak for you, but having spent quite some time together, earnestly wanting to take a hold of all the reins, find out where the loopholes are, get the advantage of expertise to stem the flow and correct the situation. And so my feeling is, with absolute the greatest respect for you and what you do for a living and how astute you are in areas of finance, I couldn't agree with you more, except for the fact that I don't think we can put our heads in the ground. But I am assured and have been assured repeatedly that this will be open, and we will be cautious, and nothing will be committed beyond, and I'm not sure where this consultant that we're hiring fits in, and what, how we're going to get paid back, and so, Betsy, I really would like you to answer, and Mayor Lee, please, if you want to be part of that too.
I'm, I'm happy to try and respond, and, and, you know, this is one of the things I love about the City of Las Vegas. We're not scared of having a really hard conversation about what we're trying to achieve here. And Councilman Beers and I have had several conversations about his concerns, and I think it's important for us to just take a look at the structure of the agreement. Right now, what the city would be doing is we would be hiring an independent financial consultant. I think there are two important components of that. One, it will help the mayor of North Las Vegas and the city council and the administration there, they have a brand-new CFO, to get a very quick handle on their current financial condition. That's really important. We anticipate having that work done, hopefully in early January, if not before. That would precede any agreement that we would bring to city councils or to the recommending citizens committee, so that we have the full financial picture. Simultaneously, we'd want to know that information before we entered into an agreement with North Las Vegas, in any regard, because it kind of speaks back to the point that Councilwoman Tarkanian is mentioning. We want to make sure that there's mutual benefit in any of these agreements, and that we're not going to hamstring one or the other by making an agreement without having all the information available. I understand Councilman Beers' concern about losing focus on our city. We've done incredible things, we continue to do incredible things, and I anticipate and can, you know, promise you that I will continue to focus on the performance that we've been able to attain. I also recognize that we're not in this valley alone, and one of the things that our council has been entering into the foray on, and we've had conversations for years, even when some of you weren't impaneled yet, about being a city of the future, and what does it mean to be a municipal leader in a regional valley as a large local government, where people look to us for leadership? We've done this on a variety of scales over the history of Southern Nevada local governments, whether it was coming together to create the Regional Flood Control District instead of one-z, two-z-ing all the infrastructure projects around the valley. Sometimes that meant that our priority projects weren't the region's priority projects, and we gave a little bit, but it was for the overall good of the region, and we were better able to take advantage of resources on an aggregate scale. I hesitate to use economies of scale, because I might get a response from Councilman Beers, but nonetheless, that's kind of the point. There are areas where we may be able to benefit by working together to a great degree. The other thing is, we're entering a new future. We're, we're not going to go back to the years, it would be great if it happens, and I hope I'm proven wrong, but we're not going to go back to the years of 10% and 15% growth. It is not going to happen. Councilman Beers is completely right. We have a deficit budget this year. But last year, through our own mechanisms, we're able to outperform our own budget, we finished the year in the black with more revenues and expenses for the first year since this recession started. I'm very proud of that, and I do believe that we will continue to see that kind of performance. We have to be diligent in watching all of those financial components. I do think that we can't operate in a vacuum here, we can't just look at our boundaries and pretend like nothing around us is going to impact us adversely, or even positively. There's a bigger, a bigger valley here, and quite... And quite frankly, there's a bigger region and we've got globalization issues that are impacting us. So it's not just about us. I think our valley's been very good at partnering when partnering was beneficial and when partnering was necessary. And I think we've created safeguards to ensure that we don't take our eye off the ball for the city of Las Vegas, but are willing, ready, and able to look outside of that boundary with regard to North Las Vegas, to try and help them stabilize to the benefit of our citizens. If we're providing extra fire service, if we're providing parks and recreation, if there's failed streets, if there's failed traffic signals, all those things have an impact on our citizens. It's important for us to make sure that they stabilize, not only for the banking and economic development reasons that Mayor Lee indicated, but for our own service delivery systems that could get impacted adversely or create additional demand, because we haven't let our service standards degrade. So then we become the option. We're the next-door neighbor. So I think this is really important, a really important conversation. I think it's manageable, Councilwoman Beers, you know, the proof's in the pudding, I guess. It's a six-month looksie. And I think it's, I think it's something that's manageable. If I feel like things are getting out of whack, and I know how you are, I meet with you every week, you will tell me if you feel like we're not doing what we need to be doing here. We will correct, we'll do a course correction. And if it's not working, we have an opportunity to get out of it.
Could I ask you a few things?
Sure.
Number one, specif-, well, one, in the briefings that we go through weekly, that you bring back reports to the briefings of how things are moving. Number two, specifically, and I may misquote you, Councilwoman Beers, but the consulting fee that will be paid ultimately, you had mentioned to me, because I'd asked you before, how do you see that coming back to the city? And then specifically, his second, one of his other comments was about the staffing hours and time being allocated from our staff to work on the project. How is that time available?
We're, in the, in the contract, the way that we'll be compensated for our time is we will track our time. And then as we progress along, we will be able to record that. One of the things that we plan on doing, Mayor, is bringing a monthly report to council here at council meetings. So it's not just going to be in briefings that we bring you up to speed on our progress. The same will be happening. Jeff is going to have a similar item for his mayor and council. We're targeting the first meeting of each month to be able to address emerging issues and to give you progress reports. We'll catalog our time, Mayor. We will be tracking that time utilization. And we will be preparing basically a running list of the time and materials that we're using to assist North Las Vegas through this process, including any independent financial consulting that we may need to get this first task done. The idea is that, let's assume for a second that we come up with a partnership, a service-sharing agreement. And there's additional revenue, or there are cost savings, or whatever there may be as a result of those agreements. We would then get paid back first. Actually, Councilwoman Anita Wood asked me about this last night. She said, "Betsy, you know, it looks like the city is getting paid first." And I said, "Well, the city is getting paid first for our time and effort from a consulting standpoint, but also for any independent consulting." So we will be cataloging that. I'm happy to brief you on that as those costs accrue. I will have to be informing Tom of that on a regular basis anyway. We've already had a conversation about that, that that will be a conversation we have monthly, so that we can keep track of that and will continue to keep a close eye on the expenditures. We have, over the last year or so, restructured things in the manager's office because we knew that there were going to be strategic issues that were going to impact our city that we needed to be prepared for. And this is the job that we hired Ted Olivas to be able to do, is to work on these intergovernmental relations. That is a big part of his job as a chief of staff. In addition to that, Mark Vincent, Karen Coyne, Scott Adams, they all work on regional issues. Our medical district is a regional issue. If we're going to become a center of excellence for medical districts, for instance, that's a regional issue. That's why Clark County's sitting on that panel. That's why all these regional hospitals are sitting on that panel, because nothing we do happens in a vacuum. We've built a team and structured our workload to be able to handle significant strategic projects on behalf of this city and on behalf of the residents of the city, in keeping with the direction you've provided, to be a progressive city, involved in the right things that impact the future of our city. So that's what we've done. And that's how we plan to handle it. And if for some reason it's not working out, believe me, I'm going to be the first one to raise my hand and say, "Look, this isn't working." I have a feeling we will be able to make it work, because there seem to be some real potentials there. Maybe that it doesn't, but I think it's worth looking at.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. And, Betsy, thanks for your comments. I was hoping that you would have taken the larger view and given us the full picture from your perspective, because I, when I first heard about this, I also thought it was good. But, you know, I wanted to have questions answered, and you've answered them to the best of your ability. No one can guarantee that we have success here. No one can guarantee we're going to save money. We probably will. And, you know, it's funny, but for the very same, for some of the same reasons that Councilman Beers will oppose this, I will vote for it. Because I know that, and that wouldn't be unusual with Bob and I, because we're the odd couple, but it just so happens that if you don't quest for savings and if you don't look for, you know, efficiencies, you won't find them. And it takes, sometimes it takes an emergency to allow people to think creatively. I mean, they're forced to. This is an American thing. We're always bouncing in and out of crises, and we figure out how to solve them as we sometimes make them. So let's say one was made. Well, they also know how to unmake it. And it's true that the state could step in at some time in the future. The recent action of the legislature prevents that for some time, because it does make, essentially make legal what North Las Vegas was doing with its sewer funds and bringing them into the general fund. And so we were always wondering how that was going to work out in the end, you know? Was somebody going to sue? Well, now it's legal. But it doesn't create a, it doesn't, you know, really make their budget blacker. It just doesn't. It's still red. And ours is barely, you know? We're kind of a shade, because we have been fighting hard. And if we hadn't, under your leadership, started cutting budgets a year before everybody else did, we would be North Las Vegas. And then we'd both be pulling each other under the water. And so now that we're in the water together and we've got a bigger life raft, I think we've got room for North Las Vegas, as long as they don't bring sharp nails and fingernails in there and then pop the, pop the, you know, the bladder. We're going to be all right. But literally, that's where we're at. We are not out of the woods yet. And I understand Councilman Beers' worries about this. We went through in the legislature, we watched the State Department of Taxation take over White Pine County. And that wasn't pretty. That was, or was the city of Ely. In any event, it was White Pine County. And it wasn't, taking the city over wasn't the cure. It was simply a way to help manage a crisis. And it really, it was Big Brother patronizingly, if you will, following the law, taking over a city that really, you know, maybe could have solved its problems on its own. But there it was, dug in deep, and they had to get help. And law said the Department of Taxation would take over. And it did. And after a while, I forget how many years, a few, it came back out from the stewardship and doing pretty well. But a lot of their economies, like ours, they're based on mining, we're based on tourism. And so we're always subject to fluctuations, and we're particularly hurt in this recession. Anyway, I'm going to support this. And I do want to say one thing. I noticed on the list of 11 things that we're going to be working on together, it's because we have departments. Each of us have departments that match those titles. There's an issue that doesn't have an apartment, but I think it has a need for joint work, and that's the homeless issue, because we rub right up against each other on our northern boundary, their southern boundary, on Boulevard and Main Street in that area. It's homelessness. And the people float back and forth. It's the perfect definition of a problem, looking for a bi-county or bi-municipality solution. And so I hope that we have time, should it come up, that this list could be expanded or changed. I would think that that would be an excellent issue to take up. And I don't know what the city of North Las Vegas thinks about that. I don't want to complicate this and look for agreement today. I'm just saying that we need to make sure we have flexibility in operating on certain things and that you don't need a huge treaty to change that list of subjects that we'll be working on. Would that be your viewpoint?
Yes, I believe the language says it's not limited to that list. And so anything that comes up that we feel we need to jointly explore, we can. Some of it may or may not go to the Citizens Committee, because it may be better handled just between the two local governments. The idea is that those nine or 10 issues would move to, at a minimum, to that Citizens Committee. And the others may, the ones that are identified as we go along. So I think we have a lot of flexibility, Councilmen, to address emerging issues or old ones, as they may be, as we go through these conversations.
And finally, Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I want to ask a couple of questions, Betsy. During this six months, suppose we are sharing some services and we realize that it's overtaxing us? Can we then pull back?
Well, Councilwoman, obviously, we would, are you ready, Mayor?
Excuse me, I mean, just as a point to add to hers, it is not until, we're not going to be sharing or voting on sharing until it's gone through this entire vetting process. Or is that incorrect?
No, you're correct, Mayor. Actually-
So six months, we're not going to, we're not going to have any sharing?
Well, what may happen is we may reach an agreement. Let's, let's just play this out for a second. We get the comprehensive financial analysis done in the next couple of months. That would go to the Service Sharing Committee. More than likely, a report would go to North Las Vegas, the city council, and possibly ours. From there, there would be an exploration of those 10 areas that are listed on the chart that Ted put up in the PowerPoint. We might work through a topic like parks maintenance and figure out a reasonable agreement that we would bring back, based on a recommendation from the Citizens Committee, to both the mayors, both of the councils in both of the cities. In doing that, there would be a discreet agreement on parks maintenance, that we would be looking at the service level standards, the cost, the, how we would deploy the services, how we would deploy people in making sure that happens. So over these six months, the idea is that if we're contributing time or effort, we're going to bill, we're going to create a bill for that effort. I'm going to be very cognizant of the fact that we have a $50,000 threshold that, you know, I hope we can manage to during that period of time. If we can't, then we need to find that service sharing so that we are getting compensated for that time. It is not our intent to take a crew from Las Vegas and send it over to North Las Vegas, nor is it North Las Vegas' intent to take a North Las Vegas crew and send it over to the city of Las Vegas.
Yeah, I understood that.
Until we have an agreement that's been approved by our respective councils.
Whatever it is, let's just say that something that you project that will work doesn't work during the six months, whatever it is. Can we then, as a council, say, "Hey, it's not working, back off"?
We have, we actually have a 30-day termination notice in this agreement, so that if at any point we feel like it's not working or-
I'm not talking about the entire agreement, I'm talking about parts of it. You know, in other words, you have different areas that you're going to cover and you're going to be involved with. I'm just saying, suppose one out of six isn't working. Can we say, let's pull out of that one?
Yes, I believe we would have the ability to say, "You know what? We thoroughly explored issue A, and we don't see a partnership in A. We're done. Check it off the list. Move on to the next topic." Absolutely.
Okay. I want to get on this and just say that I really agree with everything that Bob Beers said. I also thank him for mentioning the Detention Center, which I've mentioned several times before. And I'm given answers that are supposed to be, everything's okay, and I know it's not okay. And he probably knows it's not okay. I want to ask for complete transparency on everything we do. Please, let us know, and not just before a vote comes, but well enough in advance that we can check it out. I just think that's very important. I'm going to vote for this, not because I disagree with Councilwoman Beers. I'm going to vote on it because I know if the goal is reached, it'll be a magnificent thing. And I always have hope. So I'm going to vote on the hope of it. But I also know that we have problems here that we have to work out, and I just want to mention that. And I personally want to thank Mr. Beers for what he has said.
Thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion here. Absolutely, Councilwoman Beers.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be clear, I'm not in any way opposed to finding efficiencies or working with North Las Vegas to help resolve the situation. That's not where I'm coming from at all. I think we're all seeing from our discussion here that we've invented new shades of gray for, for conducting businesses in our two cities here. But we're still left with the fact that this is a huge hole. It's pretty well-defined, it's broadly accepted by everyone except North Las Vegas historically, and probably beyond the ability, beyond the ability of new efficiencies, which are pretty subtle to fix, because this is such a big hole. Maybe if this was two or three years ago, this would make a lot more sense to me, because there are already two or three years down that path of spending savings on current operating costs. And then finally, state law, which provides a process for this, grants the Department of Taxation tools that we don't have, that Mayor Lee doesn't have, none of us have the kinds of tools that State Department of Tax has to come in and resolve this kind of a situation when it occurs. So I remain the token contrary vote, understanding completely why we're doing what we're doing and where we're going, but I still think it's valuable to have a token contrary vote.
And I do know and do recall as many times it was asked for the transparency of the financial standings in North Las Vegas. It was never given, never, over the period of all those meetings with the speaker, never.
Thank you, Mayor. Betsy, the question that I have for you, the 11 items listed here, they can change in the course of the six months. This is just a parameter and a guideline that we're moving, moving forward with, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So having said that, is there anything within the parameters of what we're moving, of what we are moving forward with jeopardizes or put us in a negative light in any way as it relates to the guidelines and the, and the approach that the state would look down on in our abilities of working together as municipalities to, to see where we can find efficiencies?
I, I don't think so. I actually, you know, I can't speak for Department of Taxation or any legislative leaders, but based on the conversations that I have been privy to and that our team has been privy to, I think the complete exploration of opportunities is really actually appreciated. And, and so this will help Committee on Local Government Finance make an informed decision, it will help taxation make an informed decision should they need to weigh in. It's certainly going to help our council and the mayor and council of North Las Vegas make informed decisions as, as we move along.
And would you, would you agree as, as a city manager and who have worked not only in this municipalities but others, that it's actually in our best interest to help and participate in the growth and the, and the development of our sister cities?
When you look at the, the current research that's out there, the strength of the metropolitan regions is critically important. We're, we're one of those pieces. Granted, Clark County and the city of Las Vegas are probably two of the largest pieces, but we're unique here because we have two very large sister cities next to us, Henderson and North Las Vegas. So as, if you look at that as a whole, that regional strength's really critical. We don't have configurations that other states have. So we don't have point-of-sales origin, sales tax. So really, the only thing that's parochial in that regard are licensing and franchise fees and property taxes, maybe to some degree, intergovernmental transfers, grants, applicability, that kind of thing. So when you look at it that way, if, if we can build regional economic strength, we benefit. We benefit as a city. If, if it's dropping down, whether it's the county, which we felt, obviously with a significant drop in tourism several years ago, or whether it's North Las Vegas or Henderson, a major economic area of our city, it's going to have a multiplier impact on our city. So the mayor's right, I believe, Mayor Lee is right in saying that, you know, if we have a strong region, we're going to have strong cities in that region. We may not all be of equal strength, but we're all going to be in a little better position. So yes, I do think that, given our unique configuration in this valley as compared to other local governments in other states, for instance, that we are impacted by- other local governments in other states, for instance, that we are impacted by their success to varying degrees.
I appreciate that. And in closing, Mayor, right before the vote, I do want to just say to Mayor Lee, thank you once again for coming forward and bringing and shining the light on this topic that, in my opinion, should have come forward sooner than later, but thank you so very much for your leadership. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you. See, we all wish you'd been there before. Okay, I would entertain a motion, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to make one comment here. At the top of every one of your slides, it says a shared services assessment. So, while we're doing this, we're not telling North Las Vegas to raise their taxes or raise their fees or do any licensing changes. We're not going to be doing any of that. That's their business. We are getting together with them to look at shared services and assess that. Is that correct?
We're doing both. We will be doing a financial assessment on them, and we will be trying to help them configure a way, an overall game plan, to help improve their current condition and simultaneously improve ours through shared services. I'm not suggesting we're going to go and say, hey, raise taxes or raise fees, but there may be ways where similar ordinances benefit all of us, which would be a policy decision on their council's part. I think one of the reasons why, and I won't put words into Mayor Lee's mouth about this, but we went through a complete fundamental service review. We looked at every single solitary program in our organization. We peeled back every layer of every onion, we pruned back in areas where we wanted to keep service, you know, a service preservation strategy. We had service elimination strategies, and we had service enhancement strategies. There were areas we didn't cut because they were a priority of the council. There were areas that we cut severely because they had to be pared back in order to make our budget balance.
Okay.
We will be helping them talk through those things. We will not be making those decisions.
Okay.
Does that help clarify?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with the addition of the Lieutenant Colonel on that consulting panel.
So, I think if you could make sure that we're appointing and approving, that would be great. Appoint the 11 members and approve the interlocal agreement, probably is, if you wouldn't mind just weaving that into your motion, that would be great.
Okay, so approve the interlocal agreement and appoint those individuals to that service share... Yes, that's my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote, and please post. Thank you, the motion carries. And Mayor Lee, will you please let us know after your meeting tonight in North Las Vegas how the vote goes?
And good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Yes, good luck to you all.
You know, we should say thank you for your vision at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. No, that's fine. Let's go back to Agenda Item 43, which is where I think we were. And this is an administrative item. Report from the Las Vegas Shakespeare Company, Inc. I think I saw Michael Gill there. He has, regarding the annual plan for the property located 821 North Las Vegas Boulevard, commonly known as the Reed Whipple Center, which is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow's Ward. And so I think we will be starting with a commentary report from Mr. Hagnes.
Yes, Mayor.
As an introduction. Thank you.
For the record, Larry Hagnes, Director of Operations Maintenance. As part of our lease agreement with the Shakespeare Company, they need to report to the council on an annual basis what progress they've made, and Mr. Gill here is here to make the annual report, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Gill.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, Sid, I... Thank you. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
City Council members, thank you for having me here again this year.
And if I could ask you to repeat your name for our record and your title?
Absolutely.
Or titles?
I am Michael Gill. I am the President and Board Chairman for the Las Vegas Shakespeare Company, a nonprofit organization currently under lease agreement for the Reed Whipple Center. In the one year since our last annual report to the Las Vegas City Council, the Board of Directors of the Las Vegas Shakespeare Company underwent an entire internal transformation, focusing on how to best utilize the Reed Whipple Center and serve the needs of our company and, at the same time, serve the broader needs of the community. An entirely new professional management staff and Board of Directors for the LVSC was the result of this study. With the new board came a renewed mission statement, and the concept of inviting other nonprofit organizations to share our facility was put into action. When we actually looked at our calendar as a professional regional theater, we realized our stage was only being utilized 28 weeks out of the year, and the board thought, this is a crime, we should invite other nonprofits to utilize our space as well.
Excuse me, all nonprofits or those in the performing arts?
Those in the performing arts, because it does include, of course, the Rainbow Youth Theater Company, which is not technically a nonprofit, but they certainly are a major arts organization. In the past year, lengthy discussions took place with 20 arts organizations, and out of those discussions, 10 letters of intent with what we consider to be the top 10 related arts companies were completely executed. This past September 6th, we held a press conference to disclose the culmination of a year-long dialogue about arts collaboration, inclusion, and a solid financial business plan that would benefit the many. The question of, why don't we return the center back into what it was originally intended to be, a community center, serving multiple organizations, is now answered. Las Vegas Shakespeare Company has joined forces with the Cultural Corridor Theater Center, a separate nonprofit organization whose sole purpose is to fundraise and purchase and renovate the Reed Whipple Center on behalf of the Las Vegas Shakespeare Company and the nine other arts organizations, with a plan of turning the complex into a first-class arts facility. Working with the Board of CCTC, Las Vegas Shakespeare Company has rebranded our building as the Cultural Corridor Theater Center, and we have announced in our in-house press conference who our partners will be post-renovation. Along with the Shakespeare Company, other organizations in our building will be Nevada Repertory, Nevada's first and only professional league of resident theaters in the state of Nevada. Las Vegas Philharmonic will be doing a new Spotlight Series, a group of smaller concerts featuring members of the Las Vegas Philharmonic, in intimate concerts, including chamber music and jazz concerts. Next Wave Opera, a new opera company which comes fully funded to produce two completely staged operas, as well as two workshop productions of new opera works in their first season. A very welcome return of the Rainbow Youth Theater Company, I'm particularly thrilled about this one, who shall have their own permanent rehearsal and performance space in our expanded renovated studio theater. Another welcome return is with the Las Vegas Youth Orchestra, a 15-year resident of the Reed Whipple Center, who will return to our complex to rehearse, perform, and have a permanent home. And other organizations, including the Young Playwrights Festival, the New Works Series, and the Las Vegas Book Club. And last, but certainly not least, Gallery OV, Opportunity Village's Fine Art Gallery. It is a retail space where clients from Opportunity Village will have an opportunity to display and sell their works of art. We're proud of the progress that CCTC has made in their campaign to fund our building purchase and renovations efforts, and we look forward to disclosing more details about our naming grant donor and other financial information in the second quarter of next year. While we've been planning for the future, the Las Vegas Shakespeare Company has continued with its core mission of hiring locals and presenting quality programming. This October, we produced Shakespeare's The Comedy of Errors, performing in parks throughout the Las Vegas Valley. I am very proud to announce that over 40% of our cast and staff were hired for The Comedy of Errors by employing minorities. Our Shakespeare in the Schools program continued this September and October with the Clark County School District, with an outreach of over 40 participating high schools in our region. In April, we will continue our children's musical series with Willy Wonka, where we'll utilize all local talent, both young and old, including citizens from Opportunity Village in our cast, as they were in our cast for Charlotte's Web this past spring. Our Shakespeare workshops and Acting Up Children's Theater classes continue throughout the year at our facility. I also stand before you as the newly-elected chairperson of the Cultural Corridor Coalition, the group of businesses between Bonanza and Washington. The Coalition has been strategizing for the last six months of how to help take the corridor to the next level, to create a safe and welcome corridor for all of the businesses and nonprofits in our two-block area. It is clear to both our organization and my neighbors that our area will not survive, each building alone will not survive. We have an inherent obligation to help the city and any other partners that want to come on board to revitalize the cultural corridor. In particular, I have to thank my colleagues at the Neon Museum and my good friends and colleagues at the Las Vegas History Museum, in particular, Executive Director Marion Gillespie and Board Chairman John Goodstein. They have been invaluable to us. To that end, the Cultural Corridor Coalition respectfully requests that this governing body give full consideration, when it comes up for review, for the cultural corridor to be included in the Millennium Plan for the City of Las Vegas. Inclusion in this plan is crucial for every member of the cultural corridor, perhaps none more so than our building. Regarding our facility, which is currently under lease agreement with the City of Las Vegas, the timing of our plans remains on track to purchase the facility according to the terms of our lease agreement with the city by the end of 2014, with construction to proceed soon after getting all necessary permitting. Our inaugural season is still slated to commence September of 2015. We are thrilled to announce that our very first production at the facility will be a co-production by Nevada Repertory, Nevada Ballet Theater, and the Las Vegas Philharmonic. I do believe it is the first time that the Philharmonic and the ballet have produced something together, and it's a collaboration that I'm particularly proud of. It really puts our facility's mission of collaboration between nonprofit organizations into practical use. I'd like to close this annual plan by once again thanking everybody on council. Mayor Goodman, in particular, you've been very generous with your time, speaking at our press conference both years, and helping us with our major announcements. We plan to make the Las Vegas Shakespeare Company and the entire Cultural Corridor Theater Complex a place that will be a major source of pride for the city, and we believe a boost to the cultural corridor in the ongoing development, redevelopment of downtown Las Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Would you, for our viewing public, anybody who would like to either be considered for helping in one of the areas, be hired in one of the areas, and/or would like to donate?
Right.
How do they... Where do they contact you, or what's your website?
There are two websites. For the building, the Capitol Campaign is 100% brick and mortar ask. None of the Capitol Campaign goes to any nonprofit organization that produces art. It is... The business plan that we're very fond of is that we have two commercial tenants, as you know, Rosemary's Restaurant, and the Bard Lounge, also run by Rosemary's Restaurant, that will pay the ongoing expenses of the building and therefore make it rent-free and sustainable, rent-free for here and after. So, for the Capitol Campaign, you would go to CCTC.org, and if you'd like to know more about the Las Vegas Shakespeare Company, our programming, our classes, our children's classes or workshops, our website is LVShakespeare.org.
Okay, thank you. Very nice report, good to hear. Any questions, comments from council?
It's just wonderful what they're doing here.
Councilwoman said she thinks... She forgot her microphone. She thinks it's wonderful what you're doing here.
Thank you.
We're very grateful. So, this is a report only, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 45. This is Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Memorandum of Understanding Between Westcare Inc., Cities of Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Henderson, Clark County, and Southern Nevada Hospitals, Relating to the Provision of Funds for the Community Triage Center, CTC, located at 930 North Fourth Street, the City of Las Vegas', contribution of $218,241.58, and this is in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow. And so, good morning, and is it morning? Yes.
Still morning.
Morning.
Yes, good morning, Mayor. Councilor, Council Steve Harson, Director of Parks, Rec, and Neighborhood Services. This is the item to approve the memorandum of understanding between all the jurisdictions. It also includes the 14 hospitals within the Southern Nevada. This is how the funding is divided up between the hospitals, the state, as well as the local jurisdictions, and as you had stated, the city's portion is $218,241.58. I have with me today Erin Kennard and Kevin Morris, both directors with Westcare. They are going to give you a brief presentation on some of the services and the performance that they've been doing over the past year. So, with that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Kevin Morris, Regional Vice President for Westcare Nevada. First of all, I would like to say thank you for letting us come in today and talk to you about our Community Triage Center, something that we think is a very vital program in Las Vegas, in the Valley. We have our presentation, and I have with me Erin Kennard, our area director who oversees our Community Triage Center, and she will be presenting today.
Hi, good morning, thank you. Erin Kennard, Area Director for Westcare Nevada, for the record. Okay, so, the Community Triage Center is actually designed to serve individuals in crisis and in need of medical detoxification. We also have an integrated program where we work with law enforcement officials for the civil protective custody individuals in lieu of going to jail. They come to our facility for detox. And these diversion efforts have actually saved the community-wide a substantial amount of funding, and instead of going to the jail to detox or going to the emergency rooms to detox, they're actually coming to our facilities. So, one of our goals over the last year and going forward is our data collection and reporting. Historically, we haven't really been collecting consistent data, therefore, our goal was to upgrade our system. What numbers do you guys want to see? What is the community seeing? And align our collection with those efforts as well. And because of those collections effort, we are now able to provide data to the community that allows us to make decisions on trends and programmatic improvements. Our collaboration and our partnerships have increased and improved with law enforcement as well as other community providers, and my... One of my favorite improvements over the last year is client satisfaction, as well as employee satisfaction within the Community Triage Center. So, we're going to go through this data, and we're going to look at some numbers from last fiscal year, and then we're going to talk about the current quarter of this fiscal year. So, last year, we served 3,768 clients, and this quarter, we've served 796, and our fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th, and our quarters are July, August, and September. So, our average length of stay is 3.31 days for last year and 3.28 days for this year. This zip code and graph comes from an economic risk assessment that was done for the City of Las Vegas, and we blended it together to show that what was reported in that risk assessment is also what we're seeing as far as zip codes and where our highest risk areas are in the valley. And 89101 and 89106 have the highest concentration of social services and treatment facilities. So, this is what it looks like for last fiscal year, and this is what it looks like for the first- the first three months of this fiscal year. 89101 and 89106, again, being the top zip codes at admission. Some of our socioeconomic factors...
Excuse me, if I may, Ms. Kennard, yes, Ms. Councilman Beers.
Did anything change from the first quarter to last year? I was looking at the map, I didn't see any...
No.
Change.
No, not, no, there's usually not a change. When we, we have little oversight meetings every, every month, well, now we moved to quarter, and the zip codes remain consistent. I mean, we might have some changes amongst eight, nine, and 10 zip code ranking, but not in the first five. Okay, so some of the socioeconomic data that we collect is homelessness, unemployment, and clients that feel they're living below federal poverty level. And of our 3,768 clients, 27% felt that they were, considered themselves homeless, which actually, for this quarter, is an over 10% jump so far. So we're going to take a look at that and see what's happening, see what's going on, and make sure that those, we have services wrapped around those individuals. And the unemployment numbers, as well as the federal poverty level, those numbers remain consistent around 89, 90%. So our referral sources, where are our clients coming from? Last fiscal year, we had about 50% of our clients were coming in self-referred, they were walking in in our facility, and we had a 30, about 38% of our clients were coming this quarter from self-referrals. And so if you take a look at hospitals and self-referrals, you'll see that there's, there's a shift in numbers, and our hospital referrals have increased and our self-referrals have decreased. However, I don't want to necessarily say that we're receiving less self-referrals because we're receiving as many self-referrals, however, our hospital referrals have increased a lot, and that's attributed to our, strengthening our partnerships with the hospitals. And I would like to add, the referrals from the hospitals, most, if not all, of those clients are coming off of a discharged legal 2,000 to us.
And if I may, specifically...
Sure.
What's your population? Age-wise and challenge-wise, what's, are your specifics of your population that might be different from the others, please?
Well, our clients are 18, we have, this, the Community Triage Center specifically serves 18 and older, and we really...
Without children?
No.
Without newborns? May they bring newborns?
No, not at this location, because it's short-term, length of stay is usually about three to four days, they come in on a medical protocol, they receive medication, we help them get off their drug of choice, and then we provide them referrals and services to continuing programs.
So what percentage are drug issues?
100%.
100%?
Yeah.
Only drugs? And do you also service and follow-up care? Is it left to the individual to stay in touch with you, or do you have enough in personnel to follow up with each?
I, yes, I would, I, go ahead.
Kevin Morris, for the record. About a year and a half ago, we started looking at follow-up, because what we were seeing was the recidivism of people coming back and forth. Through working with the Committee of Homeless, we started a program, Safe Haven, which is now allowing us to keep people into the program a little bit longer so that we can, because not on top of their substance issues, they also have mental health issues, so we give them a chance to get stable on their medications and get them stable. They can stay in that program basically as long as they want, and then we also received another program where we do some case management after they leave, so we have just started that in the last year or so.
And in the follow-up care, which is critical because of the recidivism, I mean, that's the revolving door so much in this area, how about their medications? If you're not taking the medication or you can't afford it, does WestCare pay for the follow-up medication, and for how long? Is that a federal grant, or...
Yeah, well, what we currently do, we have a psychiatrist who comes in twice a week to see people with mental health issues. We do prescribe 30 days of meds usually, and then we try to link them into adult mental health and get their medications paid through that way.
And so looking to the future, where all the mental health dollars are drying up a little bit, what's the future?
Well, that's a good question. With the Affordable Care Act coming out, it's still kind of murky how that all kind of is going to affect this. Right now, we do have a good working relationship with adult mental health that we haven't had a problem with the meds so far. The meds can be expensive, but right now, that's, that's our main referral source for medication.
And in these numbers, are the recidivists included in these numbers?
Yes.
That you're saying they're part of that?
Yeah.
Can you identify what portion of the 50%, the self-referrals are recidivists?
I can, however, we didn't pull out, we didn't tease out that specific data set, but that is something we can get for you. Later on in the slides, we do talk about the duplicated clients and where we're at with those. So if I don't, by the end of your presentation, Mayor, answer your question, then I'll get to it. Okay, so of the hospitals, the 14 that we have that refer to us, these are our top four, and they consistent, this is consistent, this data doesn't fluctuate too much. It's UMC, Sunrise Valley, and Desert Springs. And so we had 1,068 clients referred from a hospital in last fiscal year and 324 in the first quarter. So discharge reason, clients can either complete our program, which the majority do, which means that they complete their medical protocol, and they are deemed safe to leave if they want or go to their, their referral source, or they, most of our clients, some of our clients leave against medical advice, and our nurses make that call. And if our nurses deem that they are still medically fragile, then that's, then they're leaving against medical advice. And then we have some clients that leave to a medical facility, meaning that their medical needs are above our scope of practice or our scope of medical practice, and then of course, we have our noncompliance with the program as we would with this population. So discharge placements, where are our clients going once they leave us?
Excuse me, Councilman Beers has a comment, please.
So on that last slide?
Sure.
Are you telling me that 4% to 7% are still there?
I can't get there, hold on. Uh-oh.
Because it added up to less than 100%?
Um, this one?
The discharge reason, yeah. So are there 4% to 7% still there?
Um, it might be, yeah, I don't know. It might be around anything.
I'm looking at they don't add up to 100%.
I'd have to...
You didn't lose 4% to 7% of those patients.
No, I think, Councilman Beers, I think you're probably correct, because this would be after they're discharged, so if they're still in our facility...
Right.
Which would be 36 clients, they wouldn't be in this.
Thank you, please continue.
Thanks, that was a good one, thank you. Okay, so where are our clients going? Majority of our clients are going to a private residence, which includes their family members, temporary or permanent. Some of our clients are going to sober livings, treatment programs, and the streets. I would like to just put out there that for the fiscal year, first two quarters of last fiscal year, we were not collecting data on discharge to the streets because we didn't know that that was a destination. However, through the course of our learning, we are now collecting that data. So you'll see a shift in refused or unknown discharge reasons or discharge placements, flip-flop, okay, with the streets. So the primary drug of choice consistently has been, over the last two years, I would say, alcohol, heroin, and methamphetamine. What I'm, what we are keeping our eye on is the increase of crack cocaine that we've seen so far this quarter. So getting on to the mental health piece, as Kevin mentioned, we do have a psychiatrist, which is what your dollars pay for, some of it, for him to come in and see our clients. And he completed 264 psychiatric evaluations last year, and he's completed 89 so far this, well, in that quarter. I would like to add that we implemented a mental health screening to, and we actually give it to everyone, to deem whether or not they are really in need of a psychiatric evaluation, because having a psych, having every client receive a psychiatric, psychiatric evaluation is not necessarily clinically sound, so we wanted to make sure that the ones that are truly in need of that service and truly in need of medications receive that service. 19 of our clients were placed on legal holds last year and three so far this year, and I would like to say our nurses are the ones that are putting these individuals on legal holds. They're deemed a danger to themselves or others while in our facility, and then we go ahead and make, make that placement. So getting to the duplicated clients, we had 680 last year, which is a lot, which is a lot, and so far in this quarter, we've had 81, which is not a lot, and we have consistently seen that number decrease. And I will give credit to our partnerships with the community agencies, as well as, I mean, we're seeing new faces, so new people are coming forward and needing treatment, and those partnerships and treatment options and service availability is helping with that decrease. Primary mental health diagnoses. I would like to preface this by saying this is all client-reported upon their admission, so our nurses are asking, have you ever been diagnosed with a mental health disorder? And this is what we, this is the data that we get. So out of the 3,768 clients we served last fiscal year, 49% said they did not ever have a mental health diagnosis. However, this quarter so far, we've had 53% say that they have.
Councilman Beers would like a question, please?
Yeah, addiction is not a choice?
Are you asking me that theoretically?
No, I'm asking you that seriously, yeah.
From a clinical...
My, I mean, I went on a ride along with Metro...
Yeah.
...two weeks ago, and could point to addiction being a pretty significant contributing factor, and I think you recall, we stopped at...
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
...one form or another.
And going in, I don't want this to be a biology lesson, however, initially, their choice to use is theirs. However, once they start the process, it now becomes a medical disease where their pleasure center in their brain has now relied on that substance, and their serotonin and dopamine, sorry for the biological, biology lesson, but their serotonin and dopamine can no longer produce on their own without that substance, and so our clients don't necessarily chase the high of the drugs as much as they do the high of the pleasure center and what if, and the reward...
Lack of withdrawal, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but is, is addiction not a diagnosis?
Absolutely it is.
None of the people who come into your facility have ever been diagnosed with an addiction problem before?
Uh...
Because it's not one of the choices down there.
Well, this is for mental health, specifically, because every single one of our clients that come into the CTC will be diagnosed with some kind of, will be diagnosed with something, whether it's opiate withdrawal or alcohol withdrawal, and then later after they see the case manager may move to dependence. Yeah, but every single one of them will have...
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So of those that did report a mental health diagnosis, major depression, bipolar, and anxiety were our top three, and we've also seen an increase in post-traumatic stress disorder. And one of the things that we're looking at internally is post-traumatic stress disorder in our veteran population, and are those two connected, which we know that they are, but what do the numbers tell us? So last year, we had 252 clients come to us off of a discharged legal 2,000 from the hospitals. So far, we've had 101. I'm not a math person, Councilman Beers, but you can see that that number is significantly increasing quickly. 673 clients reported connected to SNAMIS last year, and 159 have reported a connection for this quarter. 31 clients last year were transported by us to SNAMIS and six so far this quarter, and when I say transported to SNAMIS, I don't mean on a psychiatric hold, I mean, they are, they already have a follow-up appointment, or they already have a meeting with the psychiatrist, and we're just making sure that that barrier, that they don't miss that appointment, because it may be difficult for them to get back into the system, so we make sure that those appointments are held. And then of the individuals that receive mental health referrals, the majority are going to Southern Nevada Adult Mental Health because they don't have a pay source.
These stays, are they paid for by Medicaid?
These what?
At Montevista, for instance, the referral to Montevista?
They could have been private pay, they could have been Medicaid, I'd have to go back and pull the specific numbers, but...
Nope, Medicaid is a large piece, I would imagine.
They would have, yeah, those individuals that were referred to Mojave, Seven Hills, and Montevista do have a pay source.
And on these referrals, does WestCare provide the transportation to make sure they get there?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Any questions? I know.
Great report, very interesting. Councilman?
If we had someone who came to us who needed help with mental health care, we could then refer them to you.
Absolutely.
All right, and all of that information is, because we do get that a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I was at a disability fair just two weekends ago, and the number, a schizophrenic lady sat across from me, and she was telling me the problems that she had had in the community, so I'm going to try and get that information to her. Her.
Thank you, please.
I took a few years off from public service. Refresh my memory, was this the program that started when we were having the emergency room crisis? This was multi-agency collaborative solution, right?
Yeah, to a certain extent. When the, the emergency rooms were having the crisis, we started the Mental Health Crisis Unit, and we have Dan Musgrove here, he probably speaks better to that than I can, but that was a piece of this.
Mayor and Council, Dan Musgrove. I represent WestCare, I do government affairs, I also represent a group of the private hospitals that are involved in this, the Valley Health System, and those of you who know, I've been involved with lobbying on behalf of local governments since 99, when I was a City of Las Vegas employee. And it actually, this was an idea, brainchild, from Councilman Larry Brown and Sheriff Keller at the time, who brought this issue to the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, because the jails and hospitals were filled with these individuals that there is no other location to take them to, because they're in, they're in this dual diagnosis, this issue of self-medication, this use of alcohol to try to combat their, their mental health issues. And so this, this is a local solution. Senator, well, not Senator, but Councilman Beers, I mean, you, you've been involved essentially since you were an Assemblyman, because it actually took a number of sessions before we got the state on board. It was actually the private hospitals and local governments who were the first funding sources. Wasn't until, I think, almost the 2003 session that we got the state to commit and, and fund a third of this. And so it's a, it's a unique concept that, that's been actually modeled across the country, because it's very rare when you see local governments, private hospitals, and the state sharing and trying to come up with a solution. And it was actually Assemblywoman Sheila Leslie, who then wanted to replicate this in Reno, and so WestCare is actually doing a similar facility in the City of Reno, because they saw what we were doing here in Southern Nevada and were just amazed at the successes. And so it was local government, and, and it was really truly the first responders who, who came together to say, look, there has to be a better way to deal with this, with this population than putting them jails and hospital EDs. And so your predecessors were the real brainchild of, of this program, and, and again, it's just something that we, we have to continue on because it is such a vulnerable population.
Well, and we need to expand it hugely in this community and across the country. I mean, the hospitals and the emergency, public hospital, still absolutely undated, either with those with issues such as you serve, or the homeless and the beds, hundreds of beds taken up, and so it's something, hopefully, it will just continue to spread in the participation by governments and the private sector will make it grow exponentially.
Absolutely correct.
It's a huge problem.
Absolutely correct, Mayor, and, and if I can, I mean, it's interesting that Mr. Riley was here today, because what, what Councilman Beers referenced was that when Tom Riley was the city, the county manager in 2004, he declared the first crisis, county-wide crisis, because a fully, one out of every three hospital ED beds were filled with a mental health hold. Well, unfortunately, we're seeing those numbers back again today, and we're hoping that with Medicaid expansion, that there's going to be some solutions out there, because the state sees this group of 19 to 64-year-old, 64-year-old childless adult males who've never had an ability to get into Medicaid, that there'll be some potential providers that may be, now be able to come in and provide some support, but again, it's, it's all about whether CMS determines these issues as reimbursable services, and that's one of the things that we're working on right now, going into January 1 of 2014, as, as we look into Medicaid expansion, both at the local and the hospital level.
If you think of the daily costs in the hospital... If you think of the daily costs in the hospital.
Huge.
Or in the detention facilities, there, there needs to be, it certainly would pay for itself if we could think even larger. And take a facility that's already there, whether it's up in Reno, and they're unused prison there, and turn that into a mental health facility. And it would save money. I mean, it would definitely pay for itself, because when you add up the costs of each one of these individuals, and the revolving door, and the recidivism that takes place, it just makes sense for us to look at a bigger picture. And I know there'd been suggestion, even down in Jean, the women's prison that was there, transporting people, getting them care. I know there's some legal issues too that are involved. But where mental health and addiction issues could be handled in a triage system and referral system, it would free up the beds, it would help in the prisons, and everything else. And I'd love to see Las Vegas just get out there and take the bull by the horn, since you already have the model.
You're absolutely correct, Mayor.
So, I mean, it's a great report, what you're doing, but you could explode it seven thousand times.
Again, it's all about the funding. And again, West Care just happens to be the provider. We did it based on RFP back a number of years ago, and there isn't anybody that really had stepped in. And again, you know, kudos to the state, too. Because with, and we have a representative from the state here, too. Dr. Tracy Green and Richard Whitley are the two new co-heads of mental health. And they truly are looking at a lot of different ideas that those of us in local government have been trying to push on them for a number of years, and they're finally starting to hear us. And they look at West Care as a huge provider on those kinds of services. And again, we're hoping that Medicaid expansion is gonna, is gonna help bring some additional dollars, and that we can allow us to expand these kinds of services that affect our first responders, doing things that they, they don't need to be doing. They need to be doing the things that they're, they're trained to do, giving, you know, birthing a baby, instead of dealing with a mentally ill person who, who just needs some help and some guidance and some stability.
I would ask you to encourage whoever you can to do a data collection base about the cost of each individual that's picked up, Metro's time, that's back out on the streets, the hospital, so that at least you can show it could be a quid pro quo. If we take all this money that we're wasting and not serving anybody, really, just putting them in a holding tag, and then put them into some productive program that really helps and with follow-up. And so, I mean, data collection on what is, what does it take Metro, what happens in the detention centers, what's happening in the hospitals, how much does it cost, how many beds are taken up, what's happening in the emergency rooms, and then you would know, so the governor could see and the legislature could see, oh my gosh, we're wasting that kind of money, these millions and millions and millions, and just putting people back out there, rather than really helping to fix, as you're doing at West Care. I mean, I think it's a natural, if we can get somebody on that database.
Yeah. And we've done that exactly from the private hospital perspective, because we know how fast we could normally turn an ER bed, you know, that we can turn it in about two and a half hours. We've done the math on that. And that's one of the reasons why the private hospitals have been willing to step up and contribute a large proportion, which is rare across the country. You don't see that. And so, you're absolutely right.
But, and in the public hospital, the UMC, I think if that information were there, they would see how important it is, and the dollars that are allocated.
They contribute through Clark County.
Yeah.
Clark County contributes both on a local government perspective and on a UMC basis. Well, they're actually the largest funder of this whole program.
Great. Thank you. Any comments, questions? Do we have, yes, to accept a motion on this, Councilwoman?
I just wanted to say that I've been pushing that we need more help in the mental health care area, ever since a governor of California started releasing mentally ill people. And then we in Nevada followed. We've never gotten back where we were decent in the help that they need. And it's just wonderful what you're doing. And I certainly would like to help. I know all we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. The question that I have is, what happened with the negotiations with the NOLA Center?
Kevin Morse, for the record. Realistically, we couldn't agree on the price. It's owned by the Housing Authority, and we just couldn't come up with what we thought was a fair price for the building. It's not something that we wouldn't still want to purchase. It's just the price was not what we thought it was worth.
And why were you looking at the building in the first place? What was the purpose for that?
You know, our four oh one Martin Luther King property is been.
Project Neon.
Project Neon is typically taken away through the Project Neon. So, we have to move out of that building on, in March. And that house is our intake and assessment and outpatient programs. And our thought process is to look at the NOLA building to maybe expand more beds for the CTC, and put our intake and assessment all in one building, so that we could reduce some costs and get a little bit more economy of scale.
Now, were you looking to move from the Fourth Street location into the NOLA building and collapse everything under one roof, or you're just looking to expand what you had at Martin Luther King?
That was a possibility, to move out of the Fourth Street facility and move into the NOLA building.
Okay. So, are you still looking at other opportunities around the city?
We are. It's very hard to find a building the size that we need to provide.
What size building are you looking for?
We're probably looking at somewhere around twenty thousand square feet.
Okay.
And for our intake and assessment, and for, you know, the first responders, good access, so that they can come quickly, drop their clients off, and go back out to their jobs. So, we found some buildings that probably didn't have really good access and kind of far out. We're really looking at something that's a little bit, would help the community. And we really thought that NOLA building was perfect.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the report. It was.
And if I can, Dan Musgrove, for the record, Councilman Barlow, you're absolutely right. And it's all about, you know, expanding services. But as, as we showed in those zip codes, it's important, we want to try to stay in the eight nine one oh one, eight nine one oh six, because that's where the services are needed. And it's important that the first responders have access to our facilities. Because the less time that they're transporting it out on the, you know, being taken away from what they need to be doing, the better it is for all of us, all of our constituents. And so, that's why it, the NOLA building was such an attractive facility. And again, it just didn't pencil out.
Did you all take the trip to Phoenix, Arizona? Was West Care part of that trip?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Mr. Harson, maybe that's, that's something you can, not necessarily now, but moving forward, to see how the discussions we had in regards to the campus that, that Phoenix has, seeing how we can, you know, possibly look at some opportunities with all of the fundings, whether it be from the federal, state, and local levels, that are contributing toward the cause of not only homelessness, but the mental health, being able to incorporate that into the campus that, that you all have traveled to Phoenix to look at, and seeing how we can possibly work that into a future development.
You're right on point. And they, along with many of the other providers, will be part of that conversation. So.
And I would add, Councilman, that the city has already sent people down to, to visit down in Phoenix. And they have plans to go look at other campuses that deal with the same area. That is on schedule.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And since this is yours, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion. But also, Mayor, I would like to recommend, suggest that I be involved in, in the conversations more intimately moving forward when it comes to the homeless, being that I solely, as the representative on the council, sharing, I want to say, one hundred percent of all of the homeless service providers in the City of Las Vegas. And when you all are out looking at these various sites, I would like to be a part of those conversations and tours, being that I'm the one that gets the microphone and the camera stuck in my face as it relates to homeless issues. I would like to, to be a part of those conversations a little bit more intimately. And, and seeing how we can really take advantage of, of what Phoenix is doing as a model. Because I really like the ideas that you all brought forward in the briefing, Mr. Harson. It really piqued my interest to see how we can really develop a campus like that to really make an impact, versus everyone being on their own individual island, providing services around the city. We can basically try to capture those services possibly under one roof, from the perspective of a one-stop shop. And that's how I, the best way I can describe what you all described to me, as far as what you saw in Phoenix.
You did it perfectly. And we will absolutely include your office on future meetings.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, please go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, as Ricky brought that up, have we not in the past tried the one-stop shopping area? Did we not try that near Catholic Services?
From my understanding, and I was not part of it back in those days, is yes, there was a, the concept was brought to the city and started in that effort. What I would say respectfully is, it just never got to the completion of where it probably should have been, or could have been. And I think that's what we're trying to focus on now, is how can we take what we have and make it better, serving our clients better, serving the neighborhood better, and providing better, better services. So, I think it's taking it further.
I would just suggest looking at what went wrong there, because there were problems. Because that area felt, the Boulder City, and Henderson, and North Las Vegas, and everybody was pushing theirs there, which overloaded them. I'm just saying, look at it, because they tried it, it didn't work. But as you try it again, you can do things that'll solve those problems, probably.
Exactly. All that is part of the assessment we'll be doing.
And I would also encourage staff to include the CEOs of the nonprofits, the organization that we have pulled together over the past year and a half, that are meeting with regularity about sharing services among themselves, and also having them part of the discussion. Because the reality of what Councilman Tarkanian has just said, you tend, if you have a center campus, that you will have, rightly so, other municipalities bringing all their people in, which will overload the system, and also do have an impact on the area where they are. Plus, of course, we're dealing with the Project Neon, which has the traffic and the transportation flow, which also impacts where this is going to go. But I was assured by staff that we have been already once to, to Phoenix, and we are now going to go be looking at other campus areas.
There's two other areas right now. We're probably looking at San Antonio, and we'll probably be looking at Broward County, Florida.
Thank you. And I think everybody on council would be interested in those reports at the appropriate time, which I'm sure is on your schedule. Thank you. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor. With that, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation of approval of the item subject to all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. Thank you again for a very comprehensive report. Thank you for all that you do. Thank Okay. We'll move on to agenda. Item number forty-six, discussion for possible action on a request for an appeal of work card denial for Michael Brooks, DB at Echo and Riggs four four zero, South Ramparts, Suite one twenty. This is in Ward Two with Councilman Beers. Is the apple in present? I see a gentleman there. And Ms. Duddleston, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. Mr. Brooks is applying to be a server at Echo and Riggs. His employer has filed an affidavit of support with some very kind comments about his work and current work ethic. We are recommending a site-specific, one-year work card with an administrative review.
Thank you. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Uh, no.
You're okay?
Your Honor, motion to follow staff recommendation.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to follow staff recommendation. Please vote. And please post. Looks like that is going to be successful. Good luck to you is correct. Thank you. Thank you. We will move on to agenda. Item forty-seven, resolution R seventy-six two oh one three, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution enacting a moratorium on certain land use entitlement applications, business license applications, which permit the sale of seal or closed containers of alcohol upon the pedestrian mall located on Fremont Street between Main and Las Vegas Boulevard for a period of a hundred and eighty days. We're going to call resolution number R dash seventy-six two oh one three forward to be heard at this time.
May I rock that this one?
I'm always looking up there for you.
Very good. The, as, as you are aware, because you've been at most of the meetings, the city has been looking at downtown safety issues for some time now. And we've had a standing committee that's been meeting for over two months to look at those issues. One of the issues that we're looking at is the issue involving the sale of closed container liquor on the Fremont Street pedestrian mall. The, I think it goes without saying, and I think everybody could agree, that it's legally being sold now by people that have licenses to sell it. But it's not being legally consumed by the consumer, who cannot consume it, in our opinion, anywhere in the pedestrian mall. During the course of studying this issue, four applications came forward. Earlier today, they've been held until February fifth. But we felt it would be a reasonable step at this point in time, to recommend a moratorium on any future applications, until we can get our arms around the problem, see if we can solve it, and then make a decision whether or not, you make a decision whether or not, these types of businesses are appropriate in the mall in the future. So, this does not affect existing licenses. This does not affect the four applications that are still in the system. But this will allow the city to turn away any new applications while going to study the issue. The resolution is in order, and I recommend approval.
Okay. As, as Mayor, and having attended most, I think, but one of the meetings you've been held, holding with Chief Coyne and Mr. Adam Scott Adams being there, as well as other members of staff, I think it has been an incredible show of a willingness to work together, both with the packaged liquor stores and the major hotels, to come to some type of common resolution on this. And I don't know if I'm permitted as mayor, but I'd like to move for acceptance of your recommendation. So, I have so moved to accept the recommendation of our attorney.
She got a motion?
I do have a question.
And there is a question from Councilman Barlow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The question that I have, Mayor, and I am in agreeance with your, your motion. But I do, I would like to bring forward the conversation of the boundary of downtown, only because as of this week and last week, there's been a number of applicants who have tried to come and place application for nude liquor establishments that are a block off of the canopy, meaning Fremont Street. So, in essence, I would like for us to at least tee up the conversation as to what that boundary looks like and what it should be. Because if you, if you keep in mind, we have Third Street, which is right off of the, the canopy. And we also have the East Fremont, and, and also, I believe it's Carson, the next street over, if I'm not mistaken, from Fremont going to the south. So, we need to, you know, think about where that, where that boundary lies, so that we can, you know, be able to stand and say yes or no to those applicants that are offset from Fremont Street.
I think those points are well, as I recall, in all of this discussion in these initial stages, and the discussions, we were speaking specifically under the canopy, Fremont Street experience. But I'm going to let Mr. Jervik respond.
The area that's covered by this resolution is the pedestrian wall. So, that's everything under the canopy. That includes the portion of Third Street that ends at Ogden. That's also part of the mall. That includes the cul-de-sac bulbs and stuff like that. It does not include the location you're talking about, Councilman. I don't believe the way we're agenda'd, that we have given notice to anybody outside the pedestrian mall that we're considering that. So, I don't think today's resolution could be amended to include bigger areas. But later on in the agenda is an item that is a new ordinance that will replace this resolution in two more weeks. And if you would like, I'd be glad to meet with you between now and the end of that two weeks, to let you know why we came to this area as the area we wanted to start with. And I think we have a possible resolution, or at least we're trying to resolve the problem with the additional application that you're speaking of.
Well, also, I would like to at least put on the council member's mind and the mayor as to, you know, more conversation as to where liquor establishments should be located. We need to now take a look at all of downtown and identify all of the locations that have the ability to apply for liquor. And we, as a council, determine whether or not those, those areas, if you will, should be allowed in the future to have it. Because I believe that what's going to happen is, we place a moratorium in this section, and it's only going to entice those. those outside of that parameter to go and apply for application, and make it a bigger geographic area than what the ordinance will be directing us to currently. So we need to, you know, be one step ahead of the game in regards to making sure that we look at our entire downtown, and make a determination as to, one, if in fact we're going to allow any more liquor stores, because we have a lot of liquor stores in the downtown currently, right? And so really saturating our downtown could be cumbersome, not only for us, but to the business community as a whole, creating a bigger problem than what we currently have. So I just want to at least put that out there for us to start thinking about as we continue to have these discussions as it relates to the ongoing issues that we face with the business community, with the residents, the new curfew law that we put in place on Fremont Street, and moving forward.
Thank you. I think those are points that certainly will be considered, and I know for this first one, and my motion speaks only under the canopy, as indicated by Mr. Jervik. So has everybody cast their, we're missing two. Councilman Coffin?
It's done.
Oh, there you are. Isn't it wonderful to have technology? Can she, would you please post? Thank you, the motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 48, Boards and Commissions for Possible Action. Civil Service Board of Trustees, Andreas Spurlock, term expires 8/17/2015, and Andreas has resigned. Any member of the council may make a recommendation. The options are, appoint a new member to fill the vacant seat, or perhaps, if we don't come up with anybody, to obey it till the next meeting. So does someone, have someone to recommend?
I do, Mayor.
Please.
However, I did not hear back from her today, I think only because I've been here at the council, and I had a little bit of car trouble, so I may have missed the call upstairs, but I do have a recommendation, and if this can be held, I would like to bring that back, unless someone else has-
Okay, so do you want to move today, that'll be fine?
Okay, then I would like to move to obey this item, at least for two weeks, to bring back that name for you.
Thank you, and if anyone else, if you would just pass that among council, and if anybody else has any names they'd like to submit, please do so, as it's open. Thank you very much, there's a motion, there is a motion to obey this item until, what is that, 20th?
November 20th.
November 20th. Please vote, and please post. Thank you, that motion carries. For Possible Action, Parks Recreation Advisory Committee, Gerald P. Farler, term expires 7/6/2014. Mr. Fowler resigned. The options are, appoint a new member to fill the unexpired term of Gerald P. Farmer. Farler, it's different, one says Farmer, one says Farler. But the top it says Farler and Farmer, if you could just let us know which one that is, please. Any member of the council may make a recommendation. Does anybody have a recommendation here? Okay, all right, please submit your, Councilman Barlow.
And actually, Mayor, I apologize, but it's the same scenario, so unless someone else on the council have a recommendation, I do as well, but I just wanted to always confirm the day before, I mean, the day of council, to make sure that nothing has changed, but if it's okay-
So let's obey this one until the 20th?
And I'll bring the both, both names back, I apologize.
Okay, and again, for any other council member, since it's open, please, if you have any names, please get those in as well. So there's a motion to obey it to the 20th of November. Please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. We move on to Agenda Item 50 for Possible Action. Regional Flood Control District Citizens Advisory Committee, Terrence P. Kane, PE, term expires December 3, 2013. Mr. Kane is eligible and wishes to be reappointed. The procedure for this board requires appointment by the city councils. Options are, appoint a new member or reappoint Mr. Kane. Who appointed Mr. Kane, and what ward is he in, do you know?
He's been a recommendation for several years, and the council has reappointed him every time.
Okay, and do you know where he lives? Ward, what ward is that?
Uh, no, it's not ward specific.
Okay, so anybody want to make a motion to reappoint, or has someone new?
Yes, he wants to be reappointed.
Yes, he does.
Then I'll make a recommendation, unless, Councilman Ross, you, you good? I'll make the motion, Mayor, to reappoint Mr. Terrence P. Kane-
That's, that is fine.
-to the Regional Flood Control District. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Kane. Agenda Item 51 has been stricken. Agenda Item 52, Items 52 through 54, Bills 2013-57 through 2013-59, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting Tuesday, November 19th, at 2013. City Attorney, would you read the new bills, please?
I'll be happy to, Your Honor. Bill Number 2013-57, in order to adopt by reference to an updated version of Title 19 of the Municipal Code, known as Unified Development Code, in private for the red matters, Bill Number 2013, date, in order to enact a moratorium on certain land use entitlement applications of business license applications, which permit the sale of seal or closed containers of alcohol upon the pedestrian mall, located on Fremont Street between Main and Las Vegas Boulevard for a period of 180 days, and finally, Bill Number 2013-59, in order to amend various sections of Las Vegas Municipal Code Title 6 regarding the timing and payment of business license fees and taxes, by the new definitions allowing for the proration of certain business license fees, amending the schedule for the payment of certain gaming taxes, allowing for the director to apply license payments to fines incurred prior to license fees, amending various provisions pertaining to ice cream trucks and providing for other matters.
Thank you. These new bills are signed to council members Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin, and again, those bills are 2013-57 through 2013-59. And so, please vote. No, just reassign, don't need to vote. Okay, so we will now move on to Agenda Item 55. EOT 51343, Site Development Plan Review, Applicant Owner, 3,000 M W LLC, for Possible Action, On Our Request for an Extension of Time of an Approved Site Development Plan Review, SDR 41779, for 113, excuse me, 136-unit apartment complex with a waiver to allow no landscape buffer along portions of the north perimeter, where six feet's required on 9.92 acres at 3,000 North Michael Way. R-Dash 3, Medium Density Residential, this is in Councilman Barlow's Ward 5. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this is a development that the neighbors had approved a couple of years ago, and nothing has changed, with the exception of the downturn in the economy. This is something that the community still supports, so I'll move to follow staff's recommendation of approval of this item subject to all the standing conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present, or representative?
Yes, I asked her not to come up with-
Is it all right, can we introduce them, and then make a comment?
Yes, of course.
Because I see you've been sitting here for so long.
I know.
I thought you might be frozen in place.
No, I'm fine.
I was just trying to streamline the process.
No, I like it, the motion's out there.
Yeah, it's Ernie Becker, 8090 South Torango, 89113. And we've just had some high vacancy in our apartments, and want to hold off until things settle down on the economy, and then start it at that time.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions? Nope, there is a motion, so let's please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much, good luck to you, best to the family. Okay, they're still cool. Agenda Item 56, EOT 51194, Request for an Extension of Time of a Previously Approved Special Use Permit, SUP 23106, for a Proposed 126-Room Hotel. And Agenda Item 57, EOT 50192, Request for an Extension of Time of a Previously Approved Site Development Plan, SDR 23105, for a Proposed Four-Story 126-Room Hotel. The applicant is McKellar Development, Inc., and the owner is NWH2 LTD at 2850 North Tenaya Way. Staff recommends denial on both items. All items are C-PB, Planned Business Park Zone. These items are in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Is the applicant present, or representative?
Yes. I'm James McKellar, Jr. I represent NWH2. I've been developing in Las Vegas, a permanent fixture here for 39 years, I've built over 2,000 apartments, and maybe 2,500 homes, and I never speculated on land in Las Vegas before, and don't intend to now. I bought this property from the city a few years back, and had every intention of developing 126-unit limited-service hotel. I entered improvement designs to the city building department, I did soils reports, I did grading and paving plans, drainage studies, I went the whole nine yards, until the economy tanked. I own the Hampton Inn next door, and in one year, my revenues fell off 40 percent. So I decided it wouldn't be a good idea to continue on with the building department, and I put it on hold. I might say that the city got a great deal when I bought it from them, and, but that's not important. The important thing is, I want to continue, I have every intention of developing this hotel out. I had an agreement with Holiday Inn Express, and that can be rekindled, but the time isn't right to construct at this time, not until the economic conditions improve. But I'm not a speculator, every piece of land I ever bought, I've built on in this valley, and I respectfully ask for your continuance of the use permit, for the site plan, and also the use permit for continuation, well, the two applications before you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fag, hello. Could you please give us a report on the denial?
Certainly, Madam Mayor, appreciate that. Flynn Fag with the Department of Planning. Our recommendation for denial stems only from the fact that this is the third request for an extension of time, and typically, when you do conditions of approval for a project, they're based on the conditions that are found when the project is approved. This occurred back in 2007, and again, conditions may have changed. However, I will state that the use is still appropriate for the site. A hotel facility or motel facility would still be appropriate here, so please note that as well.
And what are the cross streets there? Tenaya, North Tenaya, and what?
It's just immediately south of the Mountain View Hospital. It's adjacent to the Hampton Inn that's developed there.
Wonderful, thank you, that is a great piece.
Sorry?
Great piece of property.
It is.
Yep. Okay, Councilwoman.
Due to the fact of the economic downturn, and I know you got caught in it, and also to the history of what you've done in the city before, never flipping over just to flip over, but just, you kept your commitment on what you were building, I move to allow two years more on the extension of time.
Thank you, there's a motion for two-year extension on time, please, any comments, questions, anybody? Please vote, and please post. That's on number 56, and post, please. That motion carries, and Councilwoman on 57, please.
Thank you very much.
But wait, wait, you haven't got your second one. You only have 56, you need 57 also, to be passed, and I, based on the same reasoning, these two, 56 and 57, are connected, I move to allow two years' extension of time.
Thank you, there's a motion on Agenda Item 57, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, good luck.
Thanks again, very much.
Great, wonderful, I think you're going to be doing it soon, actually.
I think so.
Yep, let's hope. Okay, Agenda Item 58, 59, and 60. EF 58, EOT 51425, Request for an Extension of Time of a Previously Approved Variance, VAR 18924, to allow six parking spaces where 11 are required for a proposed two-story, 3,299-square-foot office building. Agenda Item 59, EOT 51427, Request for an Extension of Time of a Previously Approved Variance, VAR 19609, to allow a 50-foot lot width, where 60 feet is the minimum lot width required, and a 4-foot side yard setback, where 5 feet is the minimum required for a proposed two-story, 3,299-square-foot office building. And Agenda Item Number 60, EOT 51424, Request for an Extension of Time of a Previously Approved Site Development Plan Review, SDR 18925, for a two-story, 3,299-square-foot professional office building with waivers to allow perimeter landscape buffer widths of 4 feet on the north, and 0 feet on the south property lines, where 8 feet is the minimum required. The applicant owner is Wayward Properties, Inc., at 514 South 7th. Staff recommends denial on all three items, all three items are P-R, Professional Office and Parking Zone. These items are in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Is the applicant or representative present, please? Seeing no one. Mr. Fag, could you explain the denials?
Certainly. The recommendations for denial are similar to the last project that we had. This project was originally approved back in 2007, and this is the third request for an extension of time.
Okay, Councilman Coffin, do you have a motion on 58?
Well, I'm not against this, Your Honor, I just want to ask, who is the representative of this applicant, Flynn?
The applicant, I believe, is Wayward Properties, and the contact information for the applicant, Mr. George Garcia is the representative for the applicant.
Okay, I did talk to him about this, then. It's a two-year extension of time request, isn't it? Okay, and apparently, they're close to finishing a deal, so I would move to grant the extension of time on Item 58.
Okay, and that's your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. That carries. Agenda Item 59, Mr. Coffin, please. On 59?
It could have been Trump. Your Honor, there is a person now, who has arrived to speak in behalf of his project or in behalf of his applicant.
Okay, well, you did well without you here, so maybe you shouldn't say anything.
See the good graces of Councilman Ross.
George Garcia, 1711 Whitney Mesa Drive, Suite 110. I think I should just sit down and be quiet.
All right, but you are here representing Wayward?
Yes, correct. Those are the three items.
Okay.
The extensions.
Thank you, okay, Councilman Coffin?
The length of time on this, again, is two years, for all please, George. And you're close to, your client is close to having something.
Yes, and of course, as you know, we're also busy on the other project that we're working with your office on.
Yes, all right, then I move for approval of Item 59.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. Thank you, and on Agenda Item 60, please, Councilman.
Your Honor, I move for approval of Item 60.
Same, two-year. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Same, with the-
Yes, ma'am, it's the same.
Thank you. Thank you. There's a motion, please vote, and please post. Please vote and please post.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, agenda item sixty-one. ROC five-one-three-eight-six, public hearing. Applicant owner, William P. Miguel et al., for possible action, request for review of condition of a previously-approved special-use permit U- zero-zero-four-nine-zero-one to delete conditions number six, which states the sale of individual containers of any size, beer, wine, coolers, or screw-cap wine is prohibited at seven-five-five North Nellis Boulevard, C-One Limited Commercial Zone, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. The staff recommends approval. Public hearing, I declare open. Hello.
Hello, Mayor.
Applicant, if you would say your name, or are you representing the applicant?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tom Amick, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is the Marketon Grocery Store there at the southwest corner of Harris and Nellis. This was a condition that was put on back in 2001 when the grocery store had first opened. It's been in existence now over ten years. It's a grocery store over ten thousand square feet. It currently has a package liquor license to sell alcohol, and we're just asking for the waiver of that condition, given the amount of time that it's been open and operating.
Oh, a nice store.
So we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please come forward, state your name. Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Comments, anything from council? Hearing none, you're on.
Your Honor, we were just waiting for one, and I can receive it from you orally today about crime in the area. It doesn't appear to have been a major area for crime. This is a busy intersection. You have about four other people with the ability to sell singles in that area. So am I correct in assuming that we have a decent, you know, climate for public behavior there?
Yes, I, we did a calls-for-service report in the last ninety days. I think they had six calls, mostly for trespassing in the parking lot, but nothing of aggressive or violent nature. So it's, there are a few other stores around town that he has. This has been a successful store for him over the last ten years. So we understand why that condition gets put on at the beginning, when these businesses are first open, but we think we've established a pretty good history there. It's a great store for us, and we'd like to be able to offer that now.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. Then I move for approval of item sixty-one.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you. Thank you. Agenda items sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five have been obeyed to the fifth of February 2014. So we will then move on to agenda item sixty-six, and that has been obeyed to the twentieth of November. So we will move on to item sixty-seven, and that is DIR five-one-one-four-seven. Applicant owner, The Howard Hughes Company, LLC, for possible action, required review of biannual development report. As required by Section eleven dot oh-one of the Summerlin West Development Agreement, generally located west of the I- two-fifteen Beltway at the north of Charleston Boulevard, APN multiple. This is in Councilman Beers, Ward Two. Staff recommends approval. Is the applicant present or representative? Hello?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm Josh Johnson with G.C. Wallace Engineering, fifteen-fifty-five South Rainbow Boulevard, on behalf of the applicant, The Howard Hughes Corporation. This is a request for approval of the twenty-four-month report as required by the development agreement. The planning department has reviewed the report and has recommended approval, and so we would respectfully ask for your approval as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, try to.
Thank you. Appreciate that. This is a public hearing, I believe. Well, it is right now, because I made it one. So anybody wishing to be heard on this, please come up, state your name. Hearing none, I would close the public hearing, which I just opened. Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, I think I'd like to ask, how many homes do you expect to build, to build out out there?
Total, the total number of homes for all?
On this, on this Summerlin West?
The entitlement amount is thirty thousand total homes.
Cannot hear you very well, sir.
I'm sorry, the entitled amount is thirty thousand homes, but there would be no way that we would reach that total.
Did he say thirty thousand?
Correct, that's correct, thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
That's additional?
Well, that would be total. That would be including what is currently existing.
How many more will be built on top of what's been built?
The entitled amount would be approximately twenty-five thousand additional homes.
Okay.
There's about five thousand current homes out there right now.
It's hard to believe you can fit that many in there between?
I don't, I don't believe that you could fit quite that many. That is the entitled amount, so I don't have an estimate of exactly how many, you know, would actually be constructed, but I don't think that we would get to the total entitled amount.
Uh-uh, thank you.
Councilman Beers?
We'll have that eastern boundary of Ward Three pushed all the way out to Durango in no time. I would move staff recommendation.
Is this all in the city or the county?
That's what I asked. Councilwoman asked the same thing I did. Is this part of it in the county or all city?
Is part of the Summerlin West in the city?
Just the city.
Yes.
All in the city.
Summerlin West is all in the city, correct?
Summerlin South is in the county.
Okay, did you make a motion when I was so caught up in whether this county or the city?
Yes, a staff recommendation.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion. Please vote and please post. Now motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to agenda item sixty-eight, our city clerk has an announcement.
Yes, Mayor, we need to recall item thirty-nine, so I can make a correction on the record and then we can revote on it.
Okay, we are recalling. I'll make a motion to recall agenda item thirty-nine. So once that little thing is up there, if you'll vote on to recall thirty-nine, please, and vote, please cast your votes, and then please post. And that motion carries. So city clerk, Mrs. Bridges, would you please make your correction?
Yes, Mayor, there is a correction that needs to be made to the actual resolution itself. Within the document, it says there is a charge of two dollars per page for certification, and it should say two dollars per document. So we'll make that correction with the final resolution after the council votes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Just full point of clarification. I may have missed it. If you don't mind just repeating it once more, Mayor?
Sure. Yes, within the resolution, it says a certification of a document was two dollars a page. It should say two dollars per document.
Okay, so if a document is fifty pages, that document is only two dollars?
Just for the certification, not for the copying fees.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify.
Yeah, we get requests for the city clerk to certify that's the document that's coming from our department. So when I certify that that's resident in our department, then there's a charge for that of two dollars for the entire document.
Okay, for the entire document. So how much is it per page?
Right now, it's a dollar per page to do standard copying.
Standard copying. And do we fax, scan, email documents? And if so, is there a fee for those items?
No, sir, we do not charge if we can just send it electronically.
I'm thinking if, I'm like you, Mayor, I don't know how to shut it down.
Wait, he's using his calculator first.
With the discussion of online, online services, is this something that we should have future conversations about as far as income-generating revenue? You don't have to answer that question. We'll talk about it later, but just something for you to think about. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and Councilman Beers?
Aren't these prices set in state law? That's why we're changing our ordinance to match.
You're taking on the state, Councilman Barlow.
Well, I'll bet at a dollar, at a dollar a piece, I'll bet we don't raise much.
Okay, I made a motion. Did I make it and vote already, or is that the last one? I made a motion to approve agenda item thirty-nine with the corrections that you have just indicated by our city clerk. And please both vote and please post. Okay, so now we go all the way to the back, and we are, ah, I have a request here. Well, let's see. We are sixty-eight. Hold on one second, please. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the City Planning Commission meetings in dangerous building or nuisance letter abatements. Thank you. And now we will move on to agenda item number sixty-nine, citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium and give your name. Your microphone's on. Oh, good. Podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker's allowed, may be limited. So please, if there are members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda, please state your name and make your comments.
My name's Anther Hart. I want to get out of the way of these people right quick, but this is very important for all of us, because this affects our entire nation. In nineteen-sixty-three, I received a letter from President John F. Kennedy, three months before he was assassinated. So this is, and it has been certified. The certification is on the back. This is a real letter. Secretary, who wrote the letter for the president, name was Evelyn Lincoln. So this is a real letter from President John F. Kennedy, three months before he was assassinated. Does that mean I corresponded with that great president, the youngest one we had ever had? Okay? And this is a picture that his wife sent me after his death. That's the one they call Camelot. And the only somebody still living is that young lady, Caroline, and she's the ambassador for Japan right now. So what I'm trying to say, she's the only living person of the original Camelot, and I'm proud of that.
Beautiful.
And this little bit of thing, this thing called the postul, then, is Mrs. Kennedy's actual signature, and she signed to send this picture.
Lovely.
So it, I remember that, it's been certified, whatever. The object, all I'm saying is that, it really hurt me deeply when that great president was assassinated, because I had, remember, I had made a personal, you know, contact with him. And so it hurt everybody, one-hundred-and-eighty-five million people in this country at that time. The objective is, I really had a person, it really hurt me deeply, because, remember, he was the youngest, and still, you know, you've had Clinton.
Hopefully, hopefully you keep all these wonderful papers and memorabilia in a safe place and a fireproof vault.
President Clinton and President Obama, we got now, they was elected at age forty-six, so they, it was in their forties-two, but somewhere younger. Kennedy was elected at forty-three, and he died at forty-six, so, you know, he was just younger than him, period, whatever. But anyway, I just want to say thanks for letting me stop by and do this with you. And there's, there's something else concerning his assassination, but I won't say that at this meeting, because the Warren Commission supported telling the truth, but they probably won't. But I do know the reason why he was assassinated and who was behind it. I really do. Thank you.
Save those treasures. Please come forward, state your name.
Hello, my name is Karen Summer, and my husband and I came here today to comment on item number fifty-one, the short-term rentals, which I understand the proposed ordinance was stricken from the agenda, because the proposal will be going before the Planning Commission next week. We had both attended the recommending committee meeting recently, and we knew that that was the plan, but we had hoped to be able to provide some more information to the entire city council. So we would ask that the recommending, I'm not sure what the procedure is, but we would ask that the recommending committee have another meeting before this comes back to the entire city council, which I believe is, right now, planned to come back in December. But we have additional information that we would like to provide. The proposal now is to take it out of conditional use and put it as a special permit, but we've been doing a lot of research, and we really don't feel that that is taking care of the problem, which is party houses. When you identify a problem, that's only the first step to discussing the whole thing, and I do not think that it really has been discussed in entirety. I did a research on the website, that is, the primary website for vacation rentals, and when this whole started, this whole process started, there were five-hundred-and-thirty-five. It's now down to five-hundred-and-seven, because people are concerned about getting caught. While I'm not concerned, because we're not doing anything illegal, because right now we are renting thirty-one days or more, but we would like to do it for less, because we get many requests from people that it might be three weeks, it might be two weeks, for various reasons that I won't go into now, but I really feel that the problem is with the larger homes. And if you look at the data that I collected, I've got it broken down, not only by Las Vegas, but also other major cities that are tourist attractions. And this isn't something unique to Las Vegas. Everybody else does it, and they somehow are able to address the problem of party houses. And I would really like Las Vegas to completely look at the problem, because I don't believe that requiring a special-use permit is going to take care of the problem. One proposal that I would like to look at, and I can go into more detail, and I'm wondering how I can provide that information to everybody, but I would like to see something continue as a conditional use for the smaller properties. We are not having parties at the two, three, and even four-bedroom properties. It's at the mansions that are having the big gatherings and causing all the problems. And if you could look at perhaps having a conditional use for the smaller properties and requiring a special-use permit for the larger properties, that might be one way of bringing forth additional information that will really help the problem. So I will be contacting the office later to find out how I can provide that information.
Absolutely. Thank you, and I think this is a large piece of why it was stricken, because obviously there needs to be more investigation, so we come up with the right solution, regardless of what the county does. This is the city of Las Vegas, and we're very proud of how we move forward and vet things thoroughly. So I'm sure your information that you've collected would be helpful and be part of the process.
Okay.
So thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Oh, I think I recognize this young lady.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members.
And how old are you now? Are you twenty-five?
Seven.
No, I can't believe it. We just love having you back here.
My name is Ashley Mesa, co-founder and CEO of the Few and We One Foundation. This year, my foundation has teamed up with the Quiet Storm Foundation, which was co-founded by NBA player CJ Watson, who played for the Chicago Bulls three years running, and this season, he is playing for the Indiana Pacers. Our foundations are working in partnership to organize this year's toy drive for Summerlin Hospital, the shade tree, and needy families. The reason we are here is to invite you to pick two or three families that we can give toys. To explain more, here is one of the Quiet Storm members.
Okay, and make sure that, please, you give us your names, too. We don't need your addresses, just your names, please.
Hi, my name is Chelsea, and this is Kendrick, and we are from the Quiet Storm, Quiet Storm Foundation Youth Advisory Council. As Ashley stated, our foundations are working in partnership to collect toys this year. We would like to invite each council member to pick two or three families from their ward that need a little help this year. Between December fourteenth and fifteenth, Ash will be dressing up as Santa Claus, and the members of the Quiet Storm Youth Group will be dressing up as elves.
Very nice.
I know, I have a great idea. Last year, Councilman Barlow dressed up as an elf, and he looked very handsome. This year, maybe everyone in the council can dress up as elves. We brought you information packages so that your, so that your people can call my people.
That is so cute.
Thank you for letting us serve.
We thank you. Way, and beautifully done, as usual. Now, one of the young ladies, we didn't get to say hello to. Now, one of the young ladies we didn't get to say hello to. What's your name, please?
Hello, I'm Kendra Patterson.
How are you, Kendra? Nice of you to come down here and share with us. Okay, we have a little more.
Do you have any questions?
Very good. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Barlow, right away, he has a question. Oh, everybody will.
Did you say your name is Ms. Weston? Here I am, over here. It's hard to see over the TV. Can I ask how old you are because you are an excellent reader?
Seven.
Good for you. Thank you.
And Councilman Beers had a question.
I think I'm just a little too tall for a regulation elf role-playing, so I'm not sure what I, what I can do, if I should dress as a reindeer.
Good idea. He's asking for a suggestion.
You think it should be a reindeer, Betsy? It should be a tree. It should be the Christmas tree?
You heard that, a Christmas tree. For anybody over five foot seven, Christmas trees, different sizes, wonderful. That includes most of us. That's a great idea. Anybody else, councilwoman?
No, I may have to be an elf.
I may have to be an elf.
I'm not over 5'7".
Well, we appreciate your coming forward again. We love to see you. Don't be such a stranger. Bring her back again and again.
Thank you.
Those are precious years, and you're doing a great job, and it's wonderful. You have such lovely friends helping. Thank you very much. Dad will always thank you, too. Thanks. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak under this portion of the agenda?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. It's going to be hard to follow that last little gal.
Yes, it sure is.
I want to address the east side of the bench up there. Mayor Goodman, Councilwoman Tartanian, Councilman Barlow, and Councilman Coffin. The street sweeping outfit is at it again. After that terrible windstorm that we had, they came out there and they just did a spectacular job. I mean spectacular. Have you seen your, the streets lately? I mean, I don't think that anybody.
You make us nervous when you say, "I've seen." I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, the streets are dirty."
No, they do a great job.
Good.
And the thing is, we want to stop them and thank them, but, you know, they wave the real friendly thing, but just keep pushing them trucks down the, down the street. So, I'm, you know, I'm kind of afraid of getting run over. But still, that's important to us, and I mean, they are really, they ought to be recognized. They really should. They just do a terrific job.
Mr. Cervantes, on behalf of your entire huge department, this is a thank you. Will you convey that for sure? And I know if you wrote a letter, just a letter, that he could pass out and that our city manager could share, it would really be wonderful.
Well, they do.
Because knowing that we are a very small crowd at this moment, appreciate it. We're grateful, and our city manager would like to say something.
Just really quickly, that crew works for Jerry Walker in Larry Hogness's Department of Operations and Maintenance, and you recognized many of them this morning because they were a big part of the flood restoration and repair work that happened out in the northwest. So, we've got a really good team, and very proud of everything that they do, and thank you very much, Todd, for recognizing that.
And I looked to see, in fact, I thought Councilman Steinman back there was Larry Hogness, and I was going to bring him up, but then I realized you're not Larry Hogness, so forget it. But, so, we go up there and to have, he is a celebrity. So, thank you.
One last thing.
Oh. Are we to be nervous and nail-biting, or is this compliments?
On the West Care issue, they're looking for a place. This city should have never let stations casinos tear down that Castaways Hotel. That convention center they had was concrete and steel, and they had the hotel aside from it. They tore that thing down, went into bankruptcy, and we lost all of that tax revenue, and that could have made a magnificent place for West Care. But that was an error that the city made, and we shouldn't be making these errors again. But again, thank you.
For those of us new to council, it wasn't our fault.
It was the county.
It was the county. Okay. No, no.
Is that city? Oh, I didn't even know that.
Councilwoman must have been out of town, and probably Councilman Barlow is gone, Anthony. But anyway, thank you very much. And, all right, so we will move on to Agenda Item 70. Councilmember recognition comments made by the individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. Any member of the council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, I have never been at a council meeting in two and a half years, that not everyone has something to say. So, this time, we'll start at the right. Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Mayor. It's this time of year when our thoughts start turning into blankets because it's darn cold at night. If you want to go light on blankets this year, the Spring Mountain National Recreation Area is going to be selling a limited number of firewood permits. Now, you have to go up there and collect your own, but you can get two cords for 40 bucks, which is a pretty good deal. You got to do provide the elbow grease. For more information, Carol Hotchkiss at 515-5440. We will be having a shredding event two Saturdays hence, up at Veterans Memorial Leisure Services Center on November 16th, from 10:00 in the morning until noon. We'll shred up to five boxes of old records, so bring them on down. We'll be having coffee with the mayor out in Ward Two. Are you ready?
I am.
That will be Monday, November 18th, at the Starbucks at Village Center Circle in the Bond Shopping Center from 8:00 in the morning until 9:30. And then, a couple days later, Thursday, November 21st, we'll be having beers with beers up at Cutter Grill, which is on the outside of the Beltway, on the last shopping center, out, on your way out of town, going up to Red Rock. And no, I'm not, no, I'm not buying, although I'll buy you an adult beverage.
Well, you're safe there, Councilman Beers.
That's, that's all I have from Ward Two, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Ross, I know you don't drink beer. Or anything, so go for it. He was safe. He didn't offer to my right or my left.
I just want to see if he was buying. Now, what is your shredding event, Councilman?
It is two Saturdays hence, November 16th.
Well, in our continued effort to keep down the identity theft in the city of Las Vegas, I too am having a shredding event this Saturday at 10:00 with Centennial Hills Active Adult Center. It is in the backside. People get confused, they go to the front, come to the backside by the library. Again, limited, five boxes. And this, I don't know how yours are, but these folks just can't wait to get their boxes shredded. They're in a line before I even get there out on the street. We have to have the marshals kind of direct traffic for us.
Who do you have shredding for you? Do you have Opportunity Village?
Opportunity Village is our partner, and I think the rest of us as council members when we do these shredding events, it's Opportunity Village. They do a great job being our partner. We took a record rake in the last time we did a shredding event, so looking forward to doing the same. And also, coming up, and I know it's in December, but I need to start spreading the word, it is Cowboy Christmas and the Classic Car Show all over again, and it seems like we just had our back-to-school fair. But December 7th, first Saturday in December, this is a tradition in Centennial Hills and Ward Six, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Floyd Lamb Park at Tulie Springs. We've got some great entertainment, Arbor View, Shadow Ridge, Centennial, Caldwell Walter, Escobedo, Bozart, Schreckenbach. School choirs will perform. There will be Santa Claus for photos. Mayor, I think you and I are going to be writing in.
And the Grinch.
And the Grinch.
Does the Grinch know he's coming?
I don't know if the Grinch knows he's coming or not.
He's escaped.
I'm sure he's paying attention. We'll make sure he gets this lined up. And Santa Claus will be coming in, in a classic car, so folks, come on out. It is free. We'll also be giving historic ranch house tours. U.S. Marines will be out there collecting toys for tots, and we'll be collecting non-perishable food, too, for seniors that are needy in our community. And it's, did I mention it was free? And if you haven't been to Tulie Springs lately, come on out there. Now, on a more serious note, our continued partnership with Nevada Child Seekers. We do have a missing young lady. Her name is Caitlin O'Shaughnessy. She's 15 years old. She's about five foot seven, 184 pounds, brown hair, brown eyes. She is Caucasian. She was last seen October 25th. Metropole Police Department details asking for the public's assistance. She was last seen in the northwest area of Las Vegas. All area hospitals are to check their registries and notify Metro if located, and it should be noted that HIPAA permits disclosure to law enforcement upon request authorized pursuant to Code of Federal Regulations. Anyway, if anyone's seen this young lady, please contact the Metropole Police Department or Nevada Child Seekers, 828-2907 or 828-3111. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And Caitlin, if you hear this, do contact Child Seekers. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite everyone to come out for the Fourth Annual Art Reef Festival to benefit the ALS of Nevada. They are honoring Dr. David Ginsburg and the ALS of Nevada clinic staff. There are going to be 60 wreaths that have been decorated. There's going to be a silent auction on those. I donated one. I'm not sure what it looks like yet, but I'm sure it'll be nice-looking. We're going to have delicious appetizers, a live jazz band, a live auction of fun hospitality items. This event is going to be held November 14th from 5:30 to 8:30. It's going to be here at City Hall on the second floor overlooking the patio. There'll be a cocktail reception, wreath auction, Republic Services and Worst Beverage are one of our sponsors. Also enjoy two hours of free parking in the city lot in Main Street across the street from City Hall. Again, it's November 14th from 5:30 to 8:30. It's free of charge, but we'd like you to spend some money on some wreaths and help out ALS of Nevada. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman.
We're coming off several weeks where we've had, well, the last couple of weeks, we've had two to four activities every single day, including Saturdays. And so, we're taking a little breathing space in the next two weeks, and we're organizing for five senior homes, which I will tell you just before Thanksgiving. I'll give you all that information, but we're organizing that for five senior homes so they'll have Thanksgiving dinner provided with help of the city.
Wonderful. Yes.
Forgot one thing, Mayor, and councilmembers. Councilman Tartanian, I know it was a little late this morning coming into the meeting, but I cannot tell you how wonderful it was to see those students standing before the audience today, and you recognizing them, and the accomplishments of Clark High School. I mean, what an absolutely wonderful thing for me to walk into, not to mention the boots, Mayor, my waiters. But I just want to make that comment publicly, Councilman, because I think you are really making an impact in these kids' lives and for the future benefit of our community.
They're good kids, they're good kids. Thank you.
And I would tell you that the boots aren't boots. I mean, they're waiter, we're up to your waist. I mean, don't think those are just little boots.
I can't wait to try them on.
Okay, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you so very much, Mayor. As usual and monthly, my coffee with the councilman is taking place the first Thursday of every month, so it will be tomorrow at Starbucks from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Coffee with the councilman. Please come out for those of you that want to share anything with me or find out anything in relation to the city of Las Vegas. Every month, the first Thursday of the month. And secondly, I'm really excited about this, Councilman Ross, my First Annual Fishing Derby taking place this Saturday.
You're ready.
Yeah, this, this coming Saturday at Lorenzi Park. We're really trying to maximize and bring a lot of recreational and cultural activities to the park. This past Saturday, we had the Bluegrass Festival, which was very great. We were really waiting for our main act, Councilman Bob Beers, who was a no-show, but it was okay. We had a great time, and one of the beautiful things is that with the Bluegrass Festival, the first Sunday of every month inside of the ban shed shell at Lorenzi Park in the middle of the water, in the middle of the lake, the Bluegrass will perform the first Sunday of every month now through the summer. So, keep that in mind, and I'll continue to talk about that moving forward, Mayor. But this coming Saturday is the, is the Fishing Derby. Teenage boys and men, please come out, if we can go back to the previous slide, please come out this Saturday. Registration is at 8:00 AM. We will have prizes, he or she that catches the first fish, the biggest fish, and the smallest fish. And, and so, please come out. We will have breakfast and lunch, and we're looking forward to teaching boys and girls how to fish versus giving them a fish. And so, there, there's a meaning behind this, and I also want to thank the Fish and Wildlife for their support. They're contributing 250 fishing poles, tackle, and bait, so the boys and girls, all they must do is just come out. And we're also looking for mentors, men and women, if you know how to fish, to come in and help the youngsters basically learn how to fish. The lake will be stocked full of trout, perch, catfish, and I'm missing a fish.
Lobsters.
No lobsters, no lobsters, no crabs, but I know trout, bass, thank you, thank you, Councilman Ross. I knew that he would help me out. So, we have bass, trout, perch, and catfish, and it will be fully stocked, so I'm pretty sure that there should be a lot of fish being pulled up out of the water on Saturday. So, please come out. And I know Mark Vincent, he took off. Mark Vincent said that he was going to participate, Betsy, so please help me, help him hold his feet in his promise to the fire by coming out and participating on this coming Saturday because I know how much he loves to fish. I believe he goes all the way up to Alaska and do some really, oh, no, he does fly fishing, so he can actually use, Mayor, if you don't mind, but I'm pretty sure those boots will fit Mark Vincent if they don't fit Councilman Ross because he fly fishes, and so they use, it's called waiters.
Yep.
Waiters, and so, Mark Vincent, I'm pretty sure would enjoy that if he doesn't have a pair of his own, he can use that. So, he can even come out to Lorenzi and wait in the water and see if he can catch a fish as well.
And he teaches, Councilman. He's a good mentor.
Councilman, I think you should require Mark to give fly fishing lessons and have to stand behind all the kids that are learning to do it correctly.
And I would like to add that I think you should make sure that you know how to fillet and clean a fish, and that you will hold lessons on doing that, and then you can eat what you catch.
That is right. That is, that's a good point, too.
You need somebody to show them how to clean the fish.
Maybe that'll be phase two.
Phase two.
Maybe that'll be phase two. We don't, we don't need anyone cleaning any fish out of Lorenzi right now, Mayor.
Okay, so make sure they save the fish.
Right.
Unless you're going to give them a bucket.
They could take it, they could take it home to a family member that know how to do that, but we will not be cleaning any fish at Lorenzi, not this go-around. But please come out this Saturday. We're going to have a great time, a lot of prizes and gifts to give away. And for any city staff, it's not mandatory, but if you like, please come out and enjoying this fun-filled event this coming Saturday. So, and also, I want to thank all of our sponsors, to include Power 88 KCP for carrying, they'll be carrying this event live on Saturday. Thank you.
Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. There seems to be a comment coming though from the right.
I was just going to say, I know that Councilman Barlow just blew you off, but I would sign up for a fish cleaning lesson from you. You were offering to teach the classes for filleting the fish.
Right, we need to do that.
Yeah, I need, I would come, I would come.
Oh, we've cleaned a few in our day. That'll be class number two.
Your Honor, I don't much about, I don't know much about fishing, but I do know that I could suggest to the councilman that, that they not put the bass in the lake until the very last minute. And I assume the other fish are not frozen, that they are fresh, that they will not be dropped in the water just so that you could hook them up with a pre-baited hook.
Yes, that is their frozen fish.
Okay, now, the bass will eat all the others first, so you've got to let them in last. They will. You'll end up with two six-foot-long bass. Nothing else.
The Loch Ness Monster in Las Vegas.
Okay, thank you very much for the recognition, Your Honor. Ward Three has been busy in many ways. We, because we're downtown, and share much of the downtown with Ward Five, Councilman Bartle, our constituents were somewhat inconvenienced this 10 days ago at the Life is Beautiful Festival for a good reason, but nevertheless, it was a little tough on them, and we really owe a debt of gratitude to our constituents who put up with this kind of thing because it is good for the city, and yet, you know, it's sometimes hard for them. This was the first Life is Beautiful, and I hope there will be many more to follow. And, and the tough job of trying to figure out what streets to barricade and which ones to have gates on, all that will be solved for the next time because they're certainly welcome to do it again. You know, Joey Vanas and Brahan Chadri and Michael Cornthwaite, they, they really took a risk and, and made it happen, and I think it came in above expectations. And I know that our city received a lot of favorable press from it, and business was pretty good downtown where people could get to it, but sometimes there were, there were difficulties. But sometimes there were difficulties. I think that Mr. Cervantes' staff did a good job. Jason in there who runs the barricades is to be commended because he opened it up here and there where needed for people, particularly a church that, I think it was at Carson and Ninth or Eighth, could not get access, and the church members couldn't attend their services. Jason responded instantly, opened it up, and showed them how to park. And so things like that happen, and we want to make sure that it continues. But in doing so, we want to make sure that we try to minimize the inconvenience even more to our constituents. Now, another inconvenience will be coming up to our constituents. And so I'm very happy to say that the day that the Life is Beautiful signs went down, the signs for the Rock and Roll Marathon went up to help guide people, to warn them that there's going to be trouble. The Las Vegas Boulevard is going to be closed practically from end to end, which means once again, our city will be cut in half. But the Life is Beautiful people, the Rock and Roll Marathon people, sorry, have put a lot of signs up. And I don't know whether our city is putting them up to
Yes.
our staff or whether they are being put up under contract by the marathon people. But we actually, I think, need more signs. We see them out there, those yellow signs, which indicate that that Boulevard will be closed. So they did not, our people did not receive adequate notice that the city would be cut in half because really, there's only two ways to get across our town. One is the 95 Expressway, and maybe the desert in arterial. No, I don't, yeah, that's right, because you can go under the Boulevard. But you're really stuck. So we've got about 12 more days to go, maybe 11 more days to go till that marathon, which will be in the later afternoon. So Las Vegas Boulevard will be closed, and a few other streets will be closed from 2:00 in the afternoon till 8:00 or 9:00 at night. And so, again, we want to monitor those signs, make sure that they're also on the east-west streets because I've seen a lot of them on Las Vegas Boulevard, and they need to be tended because the wind is blowing some of them around where they can't be seen. So they have to be ridden to make sure. And so, but again, it's an inconvenience for the people downtown, and in this case, for many more than just downtown people, employees of the casinos who work downtown. And I think that these signs are a key to warning them this year that it's happening. Also, last weekend, we had the beautiful Las Vegas Valley Book Festival. And I can't tell you how well that was managed by our city staff. Historic Fifth Street School was beautiful. The staff over there worked extra hard to make it happen. We had some wonderful speakers. Walter Dean Myers, I attended a lecture by him, and he spoke for over an hour. He's our U.S. Reading Ambassador, and he travels all over the world. He's 75 or 76 years old. He had just come in from London. And he gave an enchanting talk on his writing and how he does it, how many pages he writes. He's written over 100 books. These are for young adults. And he's a writing machine. He has no intention of retiring. So we were pleased, really honored to have him there and so many other people. So our cultural affairs department really, really went above and beyond. So I think these are the main things we wanted to talk about, two that have happened and one coming.
Thank you.
So Ward Three's been busy.
Okay, closing out tonight, hopefully, my husband and I, former Mayor Oscar Goodman, are welcoming to downtown the Second Annual World Food Championships. This is featuring 400 chefs from around the world and the subject of up-and-coming A&amp;E Series. This tasty competition will provide downtown Las Vegas with a world-class culinary experience. And I immediately leaned over to the Mayor Protem because he loves food, but he's busy. And he could have come down. We're inviting you all to taste away. Join us this evening at the Golden Nugget Hotel and see the talented competitors prepare their wares throughout the downtown area November 7th through 10th. And bon appétit. And of course, please join us all in honoring and thanking our nation's veterans as we celebrate Veterans Day this coming Monday, November 11th. It's always November 11th. Las Vegas' parade, the Veterans Day Parade, the largest west of the Mississippi, provides a splendid opportunity to demonstrate our gratitude and patriotism, pay respects to those who so honorably have defended our freedom and way of life. The festivities begin at 10:00 a.m. downtown on Fourth Street. So bring your family and friends, and our council people, hopefully, all will be joining in the parade. On Tuesday, November 12th, we're delighted to welcome officially the Downtown Grand Hotel and Casino to Las Vegas. It's their formal opening November 11th. And the kickoff will be at 2:00 p.m. And hopes everyone will have the chance to come down and see that great hotel open its doors again. The old lady luck is gone, and we have this phenomenal hotel, which has some great amenities that there are nowhere else. It's going to be beautiful. And our coffee together in Ward Two, as Councilman Beers mentioned, on the 18th. And our next city council meeting will be Wednesday, November 11th. Wrong, November 20th, in the council chambers here at 9:00 a.m. So until then, a safe and happy Veterans Day and all the activities with our council persons as they go forward. And thank you all for participating, and thank you, our wonderful staff. Meeting is adjourned.